Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wonder if that's my umbrella in the corner? Okay, let's see. We are going to have one alternate voting tonight, so we will have Maureen in for a voting position for the vacant spot that Neil had formerly occupied. Let's see, let me remind everybody that we'll address the board to make sure the microphone's turned on and you speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you. Also, applicants and any speaking members of the public, please clearly identify yourself for the record. The next planning board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for December 5th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room, which is this room. Uh, let's see, that covers our, um, our call to order. I would also exercise the chairman's privilege to rearrange the agenda and suggest that we will move item eight up to, uh, after following the third spot on the agenda. Uh, with that in mind, um, we do have a consent agenda with one item on it, which is the establishment and subsequent reduction of a performance bond for Normandy Estates. Has the board members prepared to address that as a consent agenda item? If so, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda? Seconded? No discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Unanimous. 7-0-0. Uh, we have an extension request, item number three, for ultimate bimmer site plan at 106 Herrick Street, which is planning board, uh, agenda item 2022-39. And this is added to our agenda rather than just being part of the consent agenda because there's a little bit of a unique history. Robert, is there anything that you want to do to introduce that to us for discussion?
With this item and actually also when you talked about moving the agenda, I'm not so sure that either of those applicants are even here yet. So I don't know if you want to move this discussion to later.
Um, so do the applicants intend to actually appear for these items?
So nobody intended to appear for the extension request, but I know the engineer who's involved with this particular request is here for, or will be here for item six.
Item six, okay.
If he wanted to talk to them.
Okay, um, I think that that is a good recommendation if we're at least going to have some discussion about this potential extension request, that we wait until the applicant has their representative present. And, uh, sorry for leaving you all on the edge of your seat for wondering why are we having a conversation about an extension request that we would normally routinely handle, but this one's is a little bit different. With that in mind, let's skip item number three. Um, I know that I moved number eight up. That, uh, are we, Robert, are we prepared with number eight or is that the one same, same person?
Yeah, different, different person, but same firm, so I don't see either of them here.
Okay, so let's not address number eight, in spite of moving it up. Uh, okay, a normal order. Darty Zebolus LLC is the applicant and owner. Continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to conduct to construct a two-story 15,000-square-foot office warehouse building with associated site improvements. The parcel is located at 101 Herrick Street in the C2 General Commercial, I-1 Industrial and Aqua Conservation Districts, Tax Map 3D-2, Lot 20, Case Planning Board 2023-20. Robert, what do we need to know before we take this item up, knowing that we've got a request before us to continue it to our December 19th meeting?
So just wanted to add to what that email says. I did have a phone call with the engineer today. He basically has given me a little bit of the background that's not really present in the email. They, they've had plans revised and they're close to being ready to submit, but they've actually kind of been holding those because the architectural design is not quite complete and the traffic studies, I think, in the process of just finishing up. Instead of them submitting stuff to us piecemeal and getting confusing while they had all the, you know, planned revisions done while we waited for the, the other outside entity items, they decided to hold off and give us all a complete package when everything was done, which from a staff perspective, I can appreciate. I don't like getting things piecemeal like that. It gets confusing for both us as well for you. So I did just at least want to add that bit that's absent from this email, but I think it is helpful to understand why things are taking as long as they are.
Okay, do we feel like this is going to come to a head on December 19th or is there?
They, they are confident that they will be ready to go. They should. They're anticipating getting a submittal package into us by next week, so we have ample time to do another department review, get a full review internally done, so it should be ready to go on that night for you.
Okay, thank you, Robert. My only thought or concern, and it's been one that I've mentioned a couple of times on other applicants, is this one's been to three meetings before this one, so tonight's its fourth meeting where nothing will happen. Um, and its fifth meeting will be potentially where some action is. And as to, um, uh, neighbors and abutters who might be paying attention to the particular project, that asks a lot of them to keep up with that schedule over the course of four continuances and five meetings. And so, uh, I think it makes sense to grant this applicant's request, but it probably behooves us to send a message to them that, uh, we do expect that they have their stuff together for December 19th. With that in mind, I don't need to say anymore. Board members, have any comments and if not, a motion?
Also move, we continue this meeting. Application for acceptance and public hearing to the December 19th Planning Board meeting.
With no further notice?
With no further notice to abutters and no further expectation that we would continue this yet again.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Caught it about three different places. Counselor Healy will count as the second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0. Okay.
19.
December 19th. December 19th. Okay. Item five on our agenda is Enterprise Holdings, Inc. as the applicant and Helios Investments, LLC as the owner. This is continued review for acceptance of consideration and consideration of final approval for a site plan to expand the parking and vehicle storage area for an existing car rental facility. The parcel is located at 302 Continental Boulevard in the R4 Residential and Aqua Conservation Districts. Tax Map 2B, Lot 32, it's Case Planning Board 2023-25, and it's continued from our September 19th and October 3rd Planning Board meetings. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just by way of summary, the applicant was last before you on October 3rd. The board had some comments regarding location of handicap parking spaces and they were concerned about, uh, the amount of, you know, landscaped area that was being taken back and some landscaping and, and some other concerns. So the applicant has gone back and performed some revisions on the plan. Initially, they had requested two waivers, uh, one from section 4.17 and another from 4.12.13.8, which is on a memo that's not in front of me to say exactly what those are. Basically, right now, I believe, uh, with the, the revisions of the plan, as I recall, the, um, the revisions might end up deeming those waivers moot. There is an additional waiver that's been added that relates to lighting, section 3.13, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that, that waiver, its equivalent was granted during the 2015 approval. We just asked that it be resubmitted under the new regulations section since the regs were completely overhauled since that last approval took place. And we just recommended that the board, uh, take that up again. And staff is recommending, if the board is satisfied with the revisions that have been made, that at this time, oh, that's right. The last piece of this was a review of the traffic study, which our consultant had actually just gotten back to us after work today. In summary, they're basically saying that the applicant hasn't noted that the increased vehicle storage is going to impact the trip generation other than to say that the way, in the, in the waiver request letter, that there's no change to the number of trips. Our consultant says they don't believe there will be no impact. However, the site, the impact from the site will likely not substantially impact the surrounding roadways. So they just kind of would have liked more accurate explanation in the letter, but they tend to feel that the changes taking place are not going to have a negative impact.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Katie, introduce yourself and tell us where we're at.
Good evening. My name is Katie Weiss. I'm with Bedford Design Consultants.
Katie, here is your.
Yeah, bring it a lot closer to you.
It's happening. Okay, uh, my name is Katie Weiss. I represent Bedford Design Consultants. Here with me tonight is Becky Marcinkovich, who's representing the applicant. Uh, last month.
I don't think they can, you can't hear me. I've been in the microphone.
The light is green. Can you hear me now? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience.
All right, one more time. My name is Katie Weiss. I'm with Bedford Design Consultants. Here with me tonight is Becky Marcinkovich. She is representing the applicant. Uh, we came before you last month to talk about the expansion of the parking lot area for Enterprise on Continental Boulevard. The day after we had the planning board meeting, I went on a site walk, uh, with applicants and we reviewed some of the things we had talked about, um, concerning the abutters. So if you take a look at the plan, on the third page is the site plan sheet. I show here, um, what we ended up doing is taking the parking lot and pushing it in this direction. You can see the little purple arrows pointing it that way and move some of the parking spaces, um, move six of them along the left side of the main parking lot there. They're in purple, where there's six parking spots there. Um, there's a retaining wall. But that gets the parking lot further away from the abutter. Um, we also took some spaces along the bottom edge and moved those farther away. Um, we also, uh, took a look at the ADA accessible spaces. We now show two out front. Um, so there are two out front and with accessibility and they're right, uh, right in front of the main door.
Much better.
Then, uh, we also, uh, took, uh, the eight-foot fence that was down lower and put it up at the top, um, at the same level as the parking lot. You can see that kind of as a line in red, uh, here. And then, um, we did add an additional light, so there are three lights now. One on the building, uh, one on the bottom of the parking lot and one on the top side of the parking lot. For the landscape plan, uh, what we did is, um, we ended up taking, uh, the three, uh, shrubs that were lower, moved them up right in front of that fence that's level with the parking lot. And then we also, uh, took three shrubs and we put them basically in line from the abutters house and the auto fair lights on the top parking lot so that when they grow, they'll be able to help shield a little bit more. Um, you can see there are two areas that are shaded. The one on the left side is an area of trees that we're going to keep. I looked at the area and we regraded it so that we could keep a small stand of trees there to help, um, buffer with the abutter. And then, um, you can see, um, on the right side, there's a long stretch. That's where we would have taken trees out if we had left the parking lot where it was, but since we moved it over, we're able to keep that area of trees. You can also see that we went in and, uh, located all of the trees that are 15 inches or more. So all these are the trees that are 15 inches. Um, right, uh, by the three trees at the fence, I colored in four pink trees. Those are four 15-inch trees that will be coming down due to the grading, so I'll show you right here. And that's because the parking lot is going to be up higher than the trees. Uh, next is the lighting plan. Uh, so we are requesting a waiver, um, as was mentioned before, for lighting for the top part of the parking lot from the original approval, uh, back in 2014, 2015. Uh, but we are also asking for the same waiver for a section of this parking lot. You can see the area that's hatched on the right side of the parking lot right there in an aqua color. Um, that area is the drive aisle and that won't have, won't meet your regulations for lighting. I just hatched it myself. It's not on your plans, but that's where it's 0.0, um, for the lighting, um, metrics.
Okay, so you're keeping it dark to help the neighbors even though our regulations would normally have it lighter?
Exactly, and within the drive aisle, um, people will have their lights on at that point, so I don't think it should be a problem.
And those, um, cars that are stored there, are those accessed by the public or do your staff, uh, teams bring those cars around for the public to drive away with?
The staff. The staff will pick them up.
Okay, so all the people that are back there should be familiar with the conditions?
Yes. Um, next is the traffic letter, so, um, let me explain a little bit about it. I don't know if you had a chance to read it, so the first two pages are my summary. Um, but attached is a memorandum, uh, done by Steve Purnoff back when we did the plans in 2014, 2015. Uh, he went to the Enterprise in Concord of a similar site because there are no, as I mentioned last meeting, there's no, uh, trip generation number for this type of use. Uh, so he went to, uh, that site. That site had 54 parking spaces. And based on that, he said, "This is about what your parking spaces will be for your site." Um, I did attach at the very end, there's an overview of the site, so you can see it. It's a long skinny piece in the middle, um, that is the enterprise site. Um, on the second page of the letter, um, my conclusion states that, um, the ITE manual is based on building square footage and the number of employees. So we are unable to confirm whether the site will have an increase in traffic. However, the proposed amendment will have a total of 77 spaces, which is more spaces in the 2015 Concord site. So I do say that there may be more traffic, but I just don't know what that is since the other site was a specific 54 spaces.
Katie, can I interrupt for one second?
Yep.
Robert, is that letter in our package?
Looked like it was not.
Okay, now that's the, that's the one we've ever designed, but the traffic letter. When you're done explaining the traffic, you want to pass that around so everybody can have a look at it?
Yep, um, so, uh, I have on the second page, there's a summary of, of the conclusions that Stephen Purnoff, uh, came to. Um, basically, the total trips, um, during the peak hours, um, on the weekdays will be 35 total trips. 19 people coming in, 16 people leaving. Um, that's a rate of departure for the peak hours of one car every four minutes. And it's similar for, um, Saturday, which is one car every three minutes for the peak hours. So it's not a huge amount of traffic.
Do you happen to know what it was before this, uh, expansion or is that what it was back then?
That's what, that was what he was saying it was at the 54, um, spaced place in Concord. Yeah, and I can pass this around.
Yes, please. It'll take it a minute for it to make it all the way across the room, but go ahead and do that. So let's talk about whatever, uh, the rest of your presentation while that's.
Um, so the next part we're going to talk about is, um, the light, um, up at the top in Auto Fair. So yesterday, um, due to the time change, I was able to go in darkness, um, to the abutter right on the property line. I'm going to pass out, uh, little packets for you and we have eight. You might have to share.
We'll do our best. Send them. Yeah, we'll share.
So on the first page, um, there's an arrow where I was standing at the abutters property line, pointing up towards the Auto Fair parking lot, and I circled two lights there. When you go to the next page, you can see my photo that I took. When I spoke to Apex Lighting, they're the ones who did our lighting sheet here, he said, "There's no way that there's actual, any actual light trespass happening on the ground." Um, the light is just way too far away for that. So what is happening is they're seeing the actual fixture itself, which you can see from a distance because it's up about 40 feet higher than where the abutter is. So it's a huge distance and so, um, I did speak to the owner and he asked me to let him know if he needed to shield any of the lights. So that is an option. You'll notice that the light, um, the lights, you can kind of see here is the brightest of the lights when I was there. This was very bright. Um, and then this light here actually faces in the other direction and you couldn't see that at all. So this light here is actually facing towards us and that's why you can see it. So I circled this one and then that's the next one down. So those two, I think, are the ones that the abutter is seeing from his house. Um, and I guess it's up to you what you would like to do about that.
So, um, I, I'm guessing that in the original approval, there was a call out for, for full cutoff lighting or shielded lighting and whether these comply with it or not, I think the, the quickest and simplest answer is to say, "Yes, let's get some shields on those lights."
I will let the owner know.
Seems like a simple, cheap, easy. Everybody will be happy fix.
So no waiver needed?
There'll still be a waiver needed for the lighting because they've got some dark areas in their parking lot that don't meet our regulations.
Yeah, I believe that's all I had to say.
Okay, and so we do not need the 15-inch tree waiver. We do need the lighting waiver and then the third waiver you had was for.
The traffic letter, which I ended up.
For the traffic. Now you've given us the traffic plan and, but you still need a waiver on it in addition to that?
For the traffic?
Yeah.
No, because we submitted a letter.
Because you submitted it, okay. So the only waiver you do need now is the lighting one?
Yes.
Which is the?
Same one we had.
There it is, there it is, the back. 3.13 E3I parking lot lighting levels. This is the traffic study here. What is the will of the board with respect to the lighting waiver request 313 E3I? Discussion or? Maureen makes a motion to grant the waiver, um, identifying which of the statutory reasons for granting waiver. Uh, there are two right there. Either one of those two bullets.
And we're adding the light shields.
And the lighting, the lighting shields here. But that doesn't have to be in the waiver, but it can be, might as well be. Either one of those, yep.
Make waiver. Restricting formity would pose an unnecessary hardship. The applicant in the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent of the regulations and to provide.
Uh, shielding's on, shielding on the lines, okay. So the motion is to grant the waiver. Yes, of the, yeah, provided the applicant, uh, puts the shielding on the two lights and the reason is restricting formity. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Halim, Jamie, one of you? Okay, discussion?
Yeah, so, um, I, I would also comment, I mean, I like the idea of shielding, but, um, you know, if you ever traveled to Tucson, they are very good at, um, lighting that, I mean, there's a lot of telescopes in Tucson. So, um, they have a lot of lighting that is very localized for your property and doesn't leave your property, um, and things like that. So, um, I would suggest that that's something that you look into as a possibility as well. And I'd like that to be, um, maybe if we could, uh, uh, if we're going to add the shielding, it can also be, um, any lighting source that doesn't, um, like, affect the abutters, like these lights do.
What do you mean by localized lighting?
I'm trying to describe this, but, um, they, they pretty much are shining like, those kind of lights are shining like straight down and, um, so they don't like leak in other directions.
These are LEDs, so they should be straight.
So those should be as well, right?
Yes.
I think that there are some more creative and extensive dark skies regulations out west and certainly Hawaii is known for it. You just can't shine lights at night. They'll just tell you to turn them off, um, and they don't really care what it does for security and crime arrest and that stuff. Just shut them off at 8:00 PM or something. But, um, uh, so I, I think from our standpoint, what we've got in our regulation allows us to take a look at the, uh, amount of candle powers that are reflected and that's what that lighting plan's all about. So although this light is visible across the property line, it does, without shielding, it doesn't actually cast any light that would be measurable at the ground level or anything that would sort of illuminate the area, so to speak. Um, and normally, what is our regulation for a parking lot? Three candle power or something like that?
Something like that, yeah.
Three, three minimum and they've got, for the last tail of the parking lot, they're zero. Essentially, no, no light cast by the lights at all. So I think that within what our regulation will allow us to do, they've probably gone as far as they are, uh, able to do. But I think some of those dark skies regulations, which we may have to look at in future versions of our regulations, lower to the ground, much more shielded, dimmer, darker, limited hours, all sorts of fun stuff like that, which it makes some sense, so it's a good suggestion. Further discussion about the potential waiver? If not, all in favor of granting it, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Unanimous to grant the waiver for the lighting? Is there more? Yes, of course.
I just want to say you did a really good job in listening to, I think, the board and the, um, the neighbors and really, you really came through in one meeting, so that was really good.
Get it all done at once.
No, you did, but you didn't, you, you've, uh, you know, made changes to your plans to move the parking lot, fix the, uh, the, the lighting, you've moved trees around in a sensible way that responded to our interests and also the handicap parking spaces. And, um, you know, it's, it's frequent that, uh, an applicant will, uh, you know, hit a couple of the things that we want and then tell us the other ones were too hard or they couldn't do it. And, um, thank you. Uh, you deserve the compliment. Uh, and, and you as the owner deserve the compliment for being willing to do it.
Yeah, she was first to say, "Let's go on a site walk and see what we can do," so.
Thank you.
And, uh, you know, showing us a picture of what the light looks like, even though it's not really helpful. It is, I mean, you want, you want shielding on it and it'll all be fine once the shielding is on the lights, but you know. Showing us that the neighbors can see your lights.
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion about any other part of your application that you want to bring us together with? Okay, are there any abutters or interested citizens who want to weigh in on this application before the board considers any final action? Going once, twice? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, uh, deliberation and potential action. Barbara?
Uh, just a quick question before you, um, we do that. For your snow storage areas.
Yes.
Do you know off the top of your head, are there any stormwater drains there?
I'm hanging on to this traffic report that nobody else has seen.
Um, so there are two snow storage areas. Um, one is shown, let me go to the site plan.
Yeah, one's to the west and the other one's like the northwest.
Yep. That one drains right into the sediment for bay, so it's exactly where it's supposed to go. The water goes in there and all the sediment comes out. Um, and to the right, um, the water will actually, when it drains, come along the edge and into the catch basin.
Down there, okay.
Yep. So it won't be going out.
Do you know what they're using as a medium to treat ice and snow? They using this, no?
Uh, Green Snow Pro, um, it's right on the plan.
Okay.
Just worried about the MS4 regulations.
Yeah, that we're into nowadays.
Will always make a difference, for sure.
Thank you.
Robert, the staff's recommendation in the memo was to consider whether to continue it, but I think that was to get the traffic analysis, which we've now got. So your staff is okay with the board potentially taking final action?
Yes.
Okay, uh, further discussion by board members. Nelson?
I have just sort of a question, Mr. Chairman.
How about it?
It seems when this, uh, plan first came to us, there were some comments from, uh, DPW regarding, um, overtasking the, overtasking the, uh, when this plan first became, came before us, I'm now doing it for the microphone. Um, the, um, there were, there were issues raised by DPW, uh, regarding overpowering the basins down on Natickook Road. And, uh, at that time, I had asked for some additional information, which never arrived. And, uh, maybe Robert might comment on that as to what the ultimate disposition was with regard to the drainage issues on this site.
So DPW did review these revised set of plans and they only have one comment remaining, which is in the, um, proposed conditions of approval, should the board decide to act that way. It is number 6A and that really just pertains to, uh, noting, revising a note on the plan about annual inspections and, and inspections during, uh, construction and reporting requirements. So I'm, based on that and the fact that all other comments were deleted from their review memo, I believe they are satisfied.
Okay, there was also a report done and I didn't get that copy either. Apparently, it was reviewed by our consulting engineer, was that, that drainage, this first set of comments?
Yeah, if, if, if they had submitted, I'm trying to. Yeah, so, if Boston O'Neill review is a condition here, so anything that was submitted related to drainage and whatnot has been reviewed by them.
I think he was saying, last time he asked for a copy of the drainage report and he didn't get one, is why he's saying it.
Okay, yeah, it wasn't related to me, so.
That's exactly what I'm getting to. Much better said, thank you.
Okay. Certainly, your inti- Certainly your entitled to have a copy of the report, if you feel like the board should wait until you've had a chance to review that before taking action, we can do that. Or if you're okay with the board taking whatever other action.
I'm okay with it based on Robert's testimony here tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Remind me as we go forward when there are, you know, plans or reports that we're looking for, and we'll give some special attention to making sure the requests aren't overlooked.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Will do. Okay. And for the, further discussion by the board? Seeing none, is anybody prepared to take a, make a motion with respect to any final disposition of the application?
All right, I'll.
Oh, I'm sorry, you. Did you hold your hand? Somebody make a motion.
I, I move we grant final approval. Based on staff memo and discussion here this evening.
All right, subject to the conditions in the staff memo, conditional final approval, is there a second? This motion in a second to grant conditional final approval?
Just, I do want to add the, the lighting shielding, I know Maureen mentioned in the waiver, but in order for it to be effective, it needs to be mentioned now.
Okay, so we'll mention the, the lighting. The light shielding that was mentioned in the waiver is part of the conditional approval as well. Is it with your second? Excellent. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I don't want that, but Robert should have one in the file. As long as Robert has one in the file and the traffic report when it gets done should get to Robert, file too. Yeah, that, when you're done with it, send that back to Robert.
Okay.
Okay. Item six on our agenda is Colt Refining Inc. as the applicant and King Herrick LLC and Evan Realty LLC as the owners. Continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct a 97,600 square foot light industrial facility. With associated site improvements, the parcels are located at 12A Star Drive. And unnumbered parcels off Herrick Street and King Street in the I-1 Industrial and October Conservation Districts. Tax map 3D1 lots 2-1 and 20-1. And tax map 3D2 lot 20-1. Case Planning Board 2023-27. It's continued from our October 17th Planning Board meeting. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just to summarize, this is actually the applicant's first physical appearance before you. The site plan being presented is going to be for a 97,600 square foot light industrial facility and associated site improvements. The proposal required a special exception from the zoning board to allow minor impacts in the 25-foot wetland buffer, which was granted at the last CBA meeting at the end of October. Applicant has submitted a couple of waiver requests with this, and I believe they actually emailed in another one after close of business tonight. And outside of that, staff recommends completeness of the application and recommending. Conditional final approval based on what we have in front of us, but. You certainly see, we hear the applicant's presentation and about her comments and go from there.
Thank you, Robert. And when you are ready, please introduce yourself and tell us about the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Meramec Planning Board, I'm.
That microphone is not working at all for you. Touch the button just to see if it's. And then bring it way closer.
I'm Jason Hill with TF Moran. Thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Good. So I'm here on behalf of the owner and the applicant. We have site plans that we've submitted as. Mr. Price mentioned, were the development of essentially three parcels, which will be merged voluntarily, you know, subsequent to approval. This is a project we met with a few months ago with you, conceptually. It was a good meeting. And since then, we've, you know, got the zoning relief, Robert mentioned. And then we've also got a support from the Conservation Commission. Which is tied in with the zoning relief, was associated with, with a special exception. And for some wetland buffer impacts. So this is a, a project for Colt Refining. It's an expansion of their existing operations on the, the property. At, at 12A Star Drive in the industrial district, southern portion of town. Slightly north of the Anheuser-Busch factory. So it's an industrial area. Three parcels. Now Colt Refining, they're a e-scrap dismantling company, they break down electronic products. There's Colt Recycling and Colt Refining, they're both under the Colt name, and they both operate in the existing 12A facility. And this proposed new facility will also have the same operational components. So they break down electronic products, supply raw material feedstock to aluminum mills, copper mills, smelters. And as well as their own refining operations. Some of the services are, include manual, of, of the refining operations include. Manual disassembly. Automated mechanical shredding, waste handling, sorting, packing, secure data destruction. Testing, refurbishment. So we're, it's anticipated that this facility, we're looking at 50 to 60-ish new employees. We're see, you know, they're tracking to occupy this new facility by the end of next year. So we've got a lot of work to do, you know, in terms of getting everything shovel-ready and then the construction process and everything. So we're here seeking site plan approval. This project will be. It's basically focused on. Well, I'll go through the site plan in a second. So this is just an aerial that shows the existing facility here. Star Drive is located here. We're talking about the, the expansion of, of the, the operation to include a parcel in this location, an existing parcel. And then the parcel to the north. In this vicinity, those parcels are both vacant, there's an, an old warehouse in the northern, abandoned warehouse on the north side of the site.
It's had a wetland to the north of the building in the parking lot, or what is that dark area right there?
That's shade. These are some tall, these are some pine trees. Are you referring to?
I just cast in that dark shadow right there above it?
Yeah, they're pretty tall pines, you'll see, I have a photograph of them, I can show you.
What, what ones is on the southern end?
There's a wetland, we're not proposing any wetland impacts, there's a drainage way here.
Okay.
Existing drainage way. That's, I think it's classified wet, it's a man-made drainage way, my understanding.
Okay.
And then there's some pockets of wet over here that were not impacting. And it's pretty much all, I believe, upland up here.
Okay.
So. Here's a view of the site from Star, the existing driveway off of Star Drive, looking north, the existing facility is back behind this, I think it's a landscape company here. So the existing facility is in here. This is a view north. This is a view of the front door of the existing facility at 12A Star Drive, here's the office entry. Building's totally enclosed, there's some trailers for. Distribution and receiving that they park. And then there's a parking field around the perimeter of the site. This is, there's those pine trees. So this is looking south, there's the abandoned warehouse. No, I'm sorry, this is looking off of Herrick Street. This is looking east off Herrick Street, those are those pine trees, the existing facility behind them, that is the abandoned warehouse, no, that's the abandoned warehouse here. So you can see it's a lot of scrub shrub ground cover, so the proposed site would occupy this area.
Okay.
That's just a view of the ground cover in that same vicinity, I took, we took the last picture showing an existing power line. It's actually an easement covers this that benefits our property. This is just a little bit of context, this is a view of King Street looking at the project, so we're back here behind, there's a gate. And so we're back behind in this area, and this is King Street, there's a couple of businesses and industrial developments over here. This is the site plan. Throw in the existing facility here. The proposed expansion to the north here. This is a proposed driveway off of Herrick Street here. This is a proposed shared loading area, which was integral in, you know, keeping this footprint. Tight and efficient, we're sharing, you know, the loading facilities. Area with the existing facility, and that'll be, that is all occurring in the central portion of the site. We have a, the main parking field along the north, and then there's a small parking area, head-in parking on the west side. And then an access drive around the back. So the front door or the main entries to the office is on the north side of the building here. We have. 118 parking spaces. And I think 30 trailer storage, this is just access trailer storage, just the tractor trailer units to be kept in this area. The trucking will all come through the existing drug drive off of 12A Star Drive. The employee access, although employees can access from both locations, this would strictly, the new access point would be for employees and. You could FedEx deliveries and such. This is a rendering of the. Front of the building, you don't have this, packages. This is a view of the. Main entry sequence to the, on the north side of the building, showing the, the office. Component, the, the rest of the building will be a warehouse, but. So this is looking. South from that large northern parking field at the facade. This is looking at the loading dock. Area, the shared loading facilities. Looking north at the south facade of the building. This is just a view on the. Other side, the side. Sorry about that. All these images, so that's the view of the other side of the building, which would be. Facing. Facing west, looking east at the west side of the building, that narrow driveway. I don't have a view of the other, the side from the railroad. So. We did. I think that's all the pictures I want to show. We did receive comments from staff. From the staff of Meramec and the Boston O'Neill Group, technical comments. Which we've addressed, I have not resubmitted the plans yet. I have reviewed them and we've made revisions to address all of those things, and we anticipate on submitting them soon. I didn't want to submit a new set of plans before you just confuse everything, but we, I understand the content of the comments, we've made the, the corrections. Anticipate a clean review process and, you know, we will coordinate with them to make sure we get sign-offs on all of those technical belt and suspenders, for the most part, there was belt and suspenders type things that were mentioned. So that's in the mix. And also from like fire department, that, that's included in the staff comments, as well as Meramec Central Water Precinct, just technical stuff, where does a hydrant want to go and this and that. But, so that's that. Let's see, finally. We. We need to, this will require the county town council approval for extinguishing a, an unused easement. Located, you can see the circle here, which is a turnaround easement. Off the end of King Street. For the new development, I've been in touch with DPW and there's no initial issues with accommodating that request. There's some agreements that will be made at the next step with, regarding the town council's sign-off on that easement extinguishing, so we're basically gonna, that would be a subsequent action that is handled. But it is, it is an aspect of the project I wanted to mention. And then finally, we have a couple of waivers. That we were submitted for. Few different things. And one I've submitted late, as Richard, as Rob, Mr. Price has mentioned, I do have a hard copy of it, for a partial waiver for the architecture of the building, for basically. The facade facing the, the railroad to not have a, it's over 200 feet long, so the ordinance requires. Yeah, and so for that facade, we don't. Anticipate any benefit of that, since it's non-viewable from any, you know, public right of way as such. So we'd submit a waiver for that aspect of the architecture. The other waivers that were for, you have, I can, if you have questions on the other waivers, I can answer those questions, so. That's, I think that covers it.
Right, planning board members, the first bit of business for us is to determine whether this application is complete. And contains sufficient information to invoke the board's jurisdiction. What say you? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to find the application complete. So there are two waivers that are identified in the staff memo, one is that the parking lot areas don't contain any interior landscaping. Another that the. Driveway on Herrick Street is within 100 feet of a. Existing access point on the same side of the roadway. And then the applicant is tonight asking for a waiver of the architectural standards for a 200-foot side of the building. Can you show me the elevations for the other three sides of the building again? There we go, okay, so that one's clearly broken up, no question there, is the space between those two marquees 100 feet or 200 feet, or? Do you know how that length is between those two?
No, I do not.
Okay. Robert, our regulation deals with lengths of 200 feet, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so if that space between those two happens to be 200 feet, we'd look for some feature between them. Potentially, unless the board's willing to undertake a waiver of that as well. I think in terms of the appearance, and especially in its location, it's certainly an attractive-looking way to approach warehouse building, which is obviously by definition. A little bit more. Function over form. How long, how long is the entire length of the building? On the long side, that edge right there?
I can measure it, I believe it's in the range of 400 feet. It's called out on the site plans, I can pull up if necessary. I don't have a measuring tool on there, it's labeled on. Here's the site plan.
The staff memo calls it up, the long wall is 400 feet.
Yeah.
The entire length of the wall is 400 feet? Okay. It probably isn't 200 feet between the two, but I want to confirm that to see if there's any need for that. Show me the elevations of the two short sides again. Not the two short sides, the one that's not facing the railroad. And then the back. Okay, so that one's got the little canopies as the form of breakup. Robert, does that meet the requirement within our regulation for how we break up the architecture?
I have a very lengthy, detailed email from Boston O'Neill explaining this regulation, if you give me a minute, I can kind of dig it up, but it's very convoluted.
Okay, dig it up and work, work our way through it. And then show the, the third side of the building that's got some.
Less than 200 feet apart, because those are like 14-foot overhead doors, and just graphically, but.
Yeah, those are not 200 feet apart, but, and then.
Doesn't have enough detail on this.
And then that's the breakup on that.
And that's a 200-foot plus or minus, it's over 200, that total facade is between 200 and 300 feet. So one breakup would. Meet that objective.
Yeah, if it's placed well enough.
Which would be that point of view with, where, that's the edge of the parking area, if I apply that to the site plan, that would be.
So I'm looking at sheet A2.
Right here, right at the midpoint. Right here, right at the midpoint.
Sheet A two on your packet? Which of the four sides is the one facing the railroad? On sheet A two.
What packet would that be?
The one that you gave us, submitted.
That would be. Can I have a view of your packet?
Yeah, well, it's unstapled itself, but it's the last page of the package that you gave us. Sheet A two.
That would be the east elevation.
Bottom one.
The bottom one, okay. So the top one and the bottom one, they look the same, like they don't have any architectural features there, do you?
We have modified the architecture since that original submittal.
Okay.
So I have, as of tonight, I've submitted the updated architecture via this presentation. I didn't want to um, introduce any new plans and I didn't bring handouts, but so those original elevations were submitted in October or have been sub, have been upgraded with the proposed renderings we're looking at today.
Okay.
But that the answer to your question is it's the east elevation view, which is when we're seeking the relief for sort of essentially look like that package that you're looking at.
So my own opinion and every board member can sort of offer their own view. Um, the side of the elevation facing the railroad, I wouldn't have any difficulty at all granting a waiver of that architectural standard for that. Um, the question is whether I understand fully what's going on with the other three elevations to make sure they're complying.
Mr. Chair.
The regulation.
Yes, sir. So the email I have from Fussin O'Neil does explain what the applicant would have had to do to comply with the regulation.
Okay.
And just to, to read that, it says to meet the regulation, the front facade, uh, for the front facade, they would need a projection or recess that would be at least six point one feet deep or two point five percent of two hundred forty-four feet, because that's the length of that wall. And at least eighty feet wide, twenty percent of four hundred feet. In reverse, to meet the regulation on the side facades, they would need to project or recess that was at least ten feet deep or two and a half percent of four hundred feet and forty-eight point eight feet wide, twenty percent of two hundred forty-four feet.
Read those numbers again. Six point five feet deep on, on, this is the front elevation, the one that's got two, two um. Doors with uh, entryways built around them.
So for the front facade, they would need a projection or recess at least six point one feet deep and eighty feet wide.
Okay, and that's on the north elevation. And then the south elevation, the loading docks. It's ten feet deep and forty-eight point eight feet long?
This for the, for the side facades, it would have to be ten feet deep and forty-eight point eight feet wide.
Why does it have to be so deep on the side ones instead of the long one?
The length of the wall.
But the longer wall has a shallower recess?
Yeah, the eighty feet wide is four hundred, is on the four hundred foot wall, the forty-eight point eight feet is on the two hundred forty-four foot.
Yeah, the depth of the recess is though this, the longer wall needs a shorter depth of recess.
Is it because there's only one breakup?
I don't know.
It's just, you just look at the regulation for what it requires. Anyway, whatever it is. So do we, do we have that or does do Fussin O'Neil comment on whether that exists here? Uh, they commented on the original plan that they reviewed that the applicant did not comply. So no one's reviewed what the applicant is showing now.
Okay. So do you have um an equivalent of A two that's been revised to show the? I know you've got sort of renderings.
Yeah, I can't state for certain that's the case.
Okay. So.
Nor can I state that I want to agree to the waiver. Enforcing that, I'm sorry, agree to that condition necessarily, unless someone can say otherwise. Because I, it looks from the aspects that we don't have eighty feet, you know, along the front. There's two bump outs, so I can't. I'm not waiving that requirement right now. I didn't ask for that waiver.
Right, right.
And nor I don't want to ask for basically to state that we'd comply with that specific request and burden the applicant with that, so.
Well, we.
We can return to that matter if you'd like, but.
Yeah, I think let's have our full discussion tonight and hear from some applicants and see what, where we, where that takes us, but it may be that we're ultimately looking to continue to sort of get a chance to know what our status of compliance is. And if you need a waiver, um, make your argument, or if you change your building to not need a waiver, then you don't need a waiver. Um, but let's continue the discussion on some of the other things as well. Um, how much parking lot landscaping are you missing and where would it be on, on your uh? Do you have that?
It's really kind of misstated. Uh, we, we comply with the overall, the overall parking lot as viewed as a singular lot has access interior parking lot landscaping. It was broken by the landscape architect group into two subcomponents. And one of those is actually this, uh, one of those small areas technically didn't meet that specific, if it was piecemealed, but as an overall parking lot, we exceed the requirement.
Can you?
I'm asking for a waiver to cover that condition with, generally it's uh, almost a withdrawal of the waiver request since we exceed the, you know, as viewed as a singular parking field, it's exceeded.
Can you go to your overhead view with the colorized uh, building, the one with the big orange building? And show me, yeah, that, show me the directions of how it was broken up or where the parking, uh, where the landscape could go or.
Yeah, so it's best known on this plan, um, this is the actual landscape plan or set. Okay. So. The west side eighteen space parking area had a requi, which is this, these eighteen spaces here.
Yep.
That had a requirement for five hundred and sixty-four square feet. If you were to view that as a, a, a parking field in and of itself, which is incorrectly stated on the plan. This is a single use. It has a singular parking field. Thus, if you look at the rest of the parking area, we're providing thirty-four ten for the remainder, the large ninety percent of the parking. As you combine them into an aggregate parking demand, we exceed, if you netted everything, we exceed what would be required. Uh, which would be we're providing thirty-four hundred square feet where the requirement would be for this full site, twenty-four hundred and some change. So we exceed the standard.
Okay, so. I'm inclined to support the waiver, but I would agree with the treating the two parking lots as separate because the landscaping in one or the other don't have any particular visual impact as you're standing there in the parking lot looking around you. You wouldn't even be aware that there was parking lot over there and trees over there that accounted for it. You know, if you're in this parking lot, you don't have any connection or, or sense of the other parking lot and vice versa. But I still support the waiver because I think that putting in some landscape islands here in that tiny little narrow passageway would be difficult for you and it would obstruct the flow of traffic and you've got all kinds of trees on the outsides of both, both sides of it. So that's my own view of it, because we'll get you where you want, but I would necess, I would probably view them as separate. Is that the way Fussin O'Neil decided to view them separately or Robert, where does that idea originate?
I have to look and see what their comment said.
Okay, have a look with that. And then the uh, the um. Kings, not, not King Street, the, the driveway and its interaction with King Street less than a hundred feet away is an easy waiver for me. That's such a low speed uh, section of a roadway that I don't see any problem at all with cars or, or the traffic interacting with each other of those two. So that, for me, that's my opinion on those.
Got a question.
Nelson, do you have a question or you?
No, I was scratching my head.
Oh, fair enough. Permission granted. Barb, you have a question?
Actually, I have a couple.
Have a edit.
So. You remember we had a conversation about the houses over there and you just showed us a picture where it looks like there is a some kind of half blockage there or at least something crossing the road as it joins in. Which is not enough to keep kids out.
Uh, in this area?
Wherever that street is where the houses are.
Okay, King Street. Yep.
Do you have the photographs that you were on the screen a second ago?
There's a gate.
This area.
Somewhere there, there might be a gate. I think, if I remember when I drove over there this summer, it was.
Yeah, there's a gate here. It's kind of scrubbed overgrown, but there is a dilapidated gate.
Is, is that used for anything? Why can't it be closed entirely permanently?
That's a public street of the city of Merrimack and that would be, you know, up to there.
But yet you have something across it.
Excuse me?
Yeah, class six road can be subject to gates and bars, but it has to be where a pedestrian could get there, get, get through it if they needed to, to get to that, unless that cul-de-sac gets discontinued.
Well, that's what I wonder because it's not passable now.
Yeah. Um, at least theoretically, it's not locked.
Unless I bring my four wheel truck.
Yeah, it's class six roads in New Hampshire have this kind of funky status, but if the cul-de-sac is ultimately discontinued, you could put whatever you want there. And I think that's what I would encourage the applicant to consider once that cul-de-sac is discontinued.
Yeah, we, we've come up with a pretty dense landscape plan with trees and shrubbery along the edge of uh, that, of our parking or driveway, effectively like along the, the property line.
Show us that.
What would be, what would be the orange building?
Yeah, that's.
And you know, that, isn't that, doesn't that tie into where you're going to be going to the town council to remove that easement for the drive?
Yep.
Yeah, correct.
So maybe we can take care of that whole thing at the same time.
Yes. I would entertain that. There was also some discussion with DPW about um potentially plowing just some snow off of King Street and using that area um, to plow to store snow, like on the edge of our site. As my preliminary with Don.
On your side?
That would be part of the whole um, town council negotiation regarding the matter of King Street.
That won't help you though if it's a light snow year.
It's just something that DPW had requested we talk about at the town council.
Well, that was one of my questions, I, out of, out of my three is where's your snow storage?
Yeah, it's around the site generally, like um, it's specified on the site plans in your packages.
Okay, down there somewhere, because I seem, sounds familiar from previous visit.
Yeah, so it's in some areas will be drained by um, catch basins and then um, which will flow into the stormwater practices. Um, generally speaking, and then um. It is specified on the site plan, the specific locations. There could be a snow dump in the back here, but it's, this, the parking lot is all curbed and has curbing and catch basins. So that um, you know, that, that melt water goes into the treatment facilities and such. And this, this land up here along the north side, it's all vegetated with um, trees and shrubbery, so you can't snore, uh, the snow can't be piled up there because there's, we're planting some you know, uh, trees and shrubs that would be killed by the snow, snow storage.
And then over on that west side. It looks like you got two handicap parking places? Is there a door there that I'm not seeing? Because I don't have my really strong glasses tonight.
Yeah, they were, the architectural team was contemplating a door in that location. It's actually, it was shown on the updated elevation views that we just went through. So that's the purpose um, for that anticipated handicap parking there.
Okay, so I'm going to want to see a door before we approve this.
Yeah, I mean.
Or we, or we move those two spaces because they're worthless where they are and.
There are um, five more handicap spaces over on the other corner.
You're right, and I'm looking for a door over there too. I see a walkway, but I don't see it labeled as a door.
Good, well, it uh.
Because if it's, if the only door is somewhere in the middle.
Yeah, the reason was that the original conceptual plan, these buildings are, they don't design them until it's approved, so it's speculative uh, locations.
Well, I'm being speculative.
So we have to speculate the handicap parking based on that. I understand your comment. We'll show the door on the final plans. It'll be coordinated. Uh, but that's the reason for the, the parking on the, on the west facade was that it anticipated uh, entry point in the building.
Okay, so we'll need to see finals.
Sure.
Thank you.
Other comments and questions?
Nelson? I have questions, but they, they're kind of wandering off into different areas as well.
Go where you want to go.
Let's talk about King Street for a minute. I understand you just, that's an approved town street. Is that correct?
Yeah.
With the cul-de-sac at the, or space for a cul-de-sac to be built at the end on your property. And that's dedicated to the town right of way, if you will. It also provides, King Street also provides as I look at the plan to one lot that's just north of there. And uh, forgotten the name on it, but it's, there's a separate lot on King Street that's serviced by King Street only.
Yeah, it's right there. It's marked, it's the three oh one one Doll Bloom and King Street, whatever that is.
Yeah.
There's a couple of lots on King Street that are accessed from King Street.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a used street. I guess that's what I'm getting at and uh, I don't see discontinuing the cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac doesn't exist as it sits here today. It's an easement to eventually someday build the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I'm sorry for that. I didn't specify. Yeah, and if you, the terrain actually drops a lot. If you stand on the end, you're sitting like ten feet up or more, like that site falls down, so it's not even a like a level area to fill in. It would be kind of complicated to build that and that's for those reasons. And others, I'm sure that's not why it was never completed.
Yeah, and, and it provides the only access to that one, at least to that one lot. Provides the only.
Yeah, we're not proposing to change the access to any of the, of the existing lots.
What's that?
We're not proposing to change the access to any of the existing lots off of King Street, having driveways off of King Street or other lots.
You're just saying it's not used now, so we don't need it anymore.
King, King Street is there and it connects to Herrick Street and people can come in and out that way, but that cul-de-sac doesn't exist and it never has.
So if you drive down cul.
There you go. There's a good picture of it.
Yeah, and if you drive down the street, you you could either use one of these existing lots or back up or.
Yeah, I mean, there's a photograph of exactly what it looks like today.
Yeah.
Right there, and that's what you do. You would have to use somebody's driveway or back it, back down the street or something.
Yeah, so those people have an interest, I think, in having a cul-de-sac. I don't know.
Uh, they, they may desire one, but unless they're, the town, the town hasn't built it, it doesn't exist and I don't think the town's inclined to want to build it.
I don't think so.
Even then.
Yeah.
If the cul-de-sac is over, if it was going to be built, it'd be built around this corner here.
Yeah, we proceeded this far with positive.
It would have to be over here.
With positive discussions with the town of Merrimack regarding dissolution of that area.
Yeah.
So.
That's it. I think um, the applicant's point is that ultimately it's going to be the town council that decides whether they can discontinue that or not, which is the same decision as whether they would ever build it. Obviously, if they wanted to build it, they wouldn't discontinue it.
Yeah.
And if they don't want to build it, then they might discontinue it.
Okay.
But, yeah.
The other thing I wanted to ask about on this site was the stormwater and how it's being handled. It appears to me that uh, well, first of all, I think our regulations require that you follow the strain water to its ultimate disposition. Which would probably be the Merrimack River. To be sure that we don't have any obstructions from the additional groundwater, additional runoff water that you're going to get with this development.
Yeah, is that it? Was that your, your question?
Pardon?
Are you finished?
That part of the question. I'll have more.
Yeah, so it um, you're right. That's true. That's um, the regulation of the town. That, you know, the rate of runoff in state, state, state law. Um, can't be exceeded without, you know, permission. So this project does not increase the rate of runoff to any of the abutting properties. Most of the area, and we submitted a drainage report that's been reviewed by Fuss once and um, DPW. There's some comments on it, but nothing considered to be significant, but um, so.
Can you give me just the overview of how you're, set up your drainage system and how's it supposed to function?
No, so we are paving, you know, some land here that's not paved and uh, there's going to be some water that needs to be managed, so uh. This site is a combination of infiltration systems and filtration systems. And for those those measures have led to a reduction in the rate of runoff to or match to the abutting properties, the receiving properties. Or match to the abutting properties, the receiving properties.
No, I get I'm looking for the more basic, where does it get collected and where does it go?
Okay, it's collected uh here. With some underground systems that filter it.
Okay, that's where it goes, where does it get collected? Where's like the basins in the in the driveway, which what's which way does your property slope, which way does it run?
Um, here's the plan. Oh, I have an overall plan, so. I'll just show it on this, this is the site plan. So the grading plan is here. And um, this is the southern, so there's the existing building, here's the new building. This is the parking and the loading area, that's collected by several catch basins as shown on this plan. And in this vicinity, this is a low area, cause it's a loading dock, it's drained into this or area. Okay, see these two things, these are um underground filtration system detention systems. Which um outlet into a um swale. Okay, that is where the water goes today, there's a swale around the um existing colt refining that was for for stormwater management. That flows into a wetland that's trained by a culvert, so we're matching that drainage pattern via. Detention and treatment, so we're putting treated detained stormwater to the southeast quadrant of the site. And in this area, which is the truck store, truck trailer parking, there's a infiltration basin. Infiltrate the water, there's an overflow for like a hundred year storm, and then the northern side of the site, we have um. In the building as well, half of the building goes into the system. The rest of the site. Is shown here, this all is infiltrated, straight into the ground. The soils are very good in that area, so this, there's no runoff going to any of these properties. Uh, so we have catch basins and a infiltrate, a a couple of infiltration systems, one here, one. Here, one here, that just discharged straight into the ground, so you're taking all that water. And it's all going into the ground and being treated, obviously. Uh, so the net effect of this development is a reduction in the peak runoff for all the storms modeled and uh. In treatment in accordance with the town and the AOT Alteration Terrain Bureau standards. Which are increased for the site um due to the um consent decree of the St. Obain uh facility. Because of the um the groundwater issues that they had this for a part of uh the stormwater treatment practices for the state of New Hampshire. Basically, we're we if we filter the, we have to uh filter the the water with an additional. Layer of filtration, just for enhanced water quality treatment.
Where are these filters? I'm sorry.
Uh, these are underground beneath the parking lot, there's a uh basically a whole a tank full of water. Okay?
Uh huh.
And so beneath the tank, there's a sand filter, an engineered soil filter that's designed or specified by the state and Allen University of New Hampshire. And the water had through absorption through flowing through that media of a certain depth.
Yeah.
It treats the water, you know, the 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 runoff, and then that that treated runoff is then discharged. To um where it, basically where it went in the pre-development condition, so. Or if it's non-runoff, it has to be totally infiltrated into the ground. And so for the northern, most of this chunk of land, as shown in this map here. It's a pre-development map, so most of this property, it drains to, here it is. This is a pre-development condition map that shows there's the existing, this is existing as of today, it's all open space here. This has been reviewed by the town and its consultants, and they have not commented on the, they have not had raised any issues about the delineation of these subcatchments. So this is the map of where the water goes today. And so you can see this, that green area runs off generally to the north. And the rest of the site, here's the northern parcel, here's the western parcel, and here's the colt refining existing parcel, those all be merged. The red arrows are the flow paths for that water, where it goes based on the topography. Okay, and so that all goes to this corner, and uh, so we're, you know, keeping in line with that. Uh, routing, and we're modeling those points to make sure that we're not increasing the runoff to those points, and we're not. And such that um that's the drainage in a nutshell.
What is the note say by the railroad? What what's the dimension of that pipe under the railroad?
A thirty-six inch.
Thirty-six RCP?
Yes.
Okay. What's the condition of that? I think that we've heard some discussion or some concern about the maintenance or.
I can't comment, I don't have a a report on the condition of that culver.
Okay.
Um, I've seen it from afar, I have photographs of it, I don't see any spalling, I haven't put a camera through it, I've seen it in the field. I have a picture of it, tough to see, but I haven't noticed any spalling or any. Physical observation of any deterior- great deterioration. Um, I can show you a photograph of if you'd like.
Sure.
So next, so here's that swale I talked about that carries the water from the existing colt site down to that point, okay, there it is. Oops.
Oops, who's there? Yeah, I see.
I gotta just settle down here, there it is.
Well, I think you told me something I didn't know, that is that the net runoff from this site after development. Is less than.
Correct.
The present runoff.
The peak rate is being reduced because of the, we're doing detention systems to do that, to take the curse off of, you know, the, your. The curve, you know, that that spike.
And that wasn't obvious to me from the material we were presented, because we didn't get a copy of the drainage report. It was reviewed by our consultant.
Okay. Further questions, Nelson?
Uh, let me see if I got anything else here, um. There was an issue with retaining walls, somebody made a comment about retaining walls.
Yeah.
What's the?
Yeah, we were that we reviewed the grading and we were able to make that go away, so.
We don't have any retaining walls, okay?
We do, we have many, but they're small, and so uh. They're not a zoning issue. Um, so anything over the four feet can't be put inside of a building setback, and we had one that was like identified as being four foot five inches or something, so. It was a simple gr- grading, this engineered solution to eliminate that issue.
Got you.
Okay. All right.
Sir Healy, he had a hand up?
Yeah, while we're still talking about drainage, so for that. Lower parking area on the southwest side.
Mm-hmm.
Where that you're gonna be putting snow in too for snow storage?
Yeah.
Where does that drain and how?
That actually is a infiltration.
That's it?
Pond, so it goes into the ground and, yes.
Okay.
It'll overflow in like a hundred and one year storm.
Yep.
You know, to um a natural water course where it would have gone.
Does it go through a rip raft or anything?
Yeah, there's a rip raft spillway as shown on the plan, just to for roger purposes.
Okay, great, thank you.
The water does not, you know, we've modeled that and there's freeboard and such for that, so I'm sure that won't happen.
Well, the hundred and one storm will happen, cause it happens every other year. But uh, as long as there's a plan for what it's doing and it's not increasing the runoff from the site as it exists today. It's okay, okay, um discussions over here, buddy?
Uh, actually for John, currently, um. By apparatus going down King Street, you have no turnaround, so it's no worse than what it is now.
Correct.
So you have no issue with that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, other comments or questions? Please, have at it.
Um, on the um, on one of the the utility plans you showed, I believe it was off of King Street. That you're taking power from Polfed Power and dropping it down to underground. Does that happen at the, only at the property line, or is that, are you intending to do that the entire way down King Street?
No, it's within the right-of-way would be. Above ground. Once it enters the property, it'll be a drop, the riser.
Just to beat under your parking lot?
Yes, because King Street now, I believe, is single phase, and there's three phases in Herrick Street, which is the closest three-phase point of origin. So we would upgrade those, the power on King Street, the three-phase and. Um, drop, you know, once it gets to our property, run underground.
So you're bringing three-phase power across the poles all the way down?
Yeah.
Street, and then dropping it down?
Correct.
If you're upgrading the power, can that not be put underground the entire way?
That's that uh ever-source thing and uh. And uh, they typically, it's not a common practice for underground power in New Hampshire on public right-of-ways.
And sometimes things that we ask them or insist on having them done, i- is it underground at Herrick Street or is it above ground?
Above ground.
Okay, so the three-phase that uh are are on poles already on Herrick Street, okay?
Yes, there's already poles and wires throughout that whole community.
Seems like an opportunity to upgrade that potentially. Um, switching gears a little bit over to snow storage on the northeast corner of the site. Um, you show. Yeah, up in that corner there, yep, uh you show us, actually over toward the railroad tracks, yep, that way. Uh, you show snow storage right in there, but that's a pretty steep drop. Uh, and grade it drops down like four feet in that little section after you uh pass the curb. So you're dumping snow over the edge of the curb to your neighbors. Potentially your neighbor's lot, any concerns on that, and how is that, how will that be managed to make sure that that lot is not impacted?
Space testing facility, I believe, the owners of that parcel, um, yeah, we're not gonna put snow there.
So that's not a snow storage?
I'm not saying it wasn't specified on the submitter, originally it was uh identified as potentially a snow storage, but we're not gonna put snow there.
Okay. Okay, and then.
Change, then make sure that the plan ultimately gets updated to show.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, but I mean, like, that's a, it's a designation, like, that will be just removed, that that's not a. I'm not changing the configuration of the parking lot or any, any of the design, it's just, that'll be like a note essentially, that. This is not, there's no, that that's all I'm saying, that it's just effectively a notation, I'm not gonna put implementing.
So it'll change from snow storage to not snow storage.
Yeah, it'll all be removed, no it on the plan that's. So that shows it there.
Okay, and then on the architectural end of it, there is a comment about the handicap parking spaces. On the west side of the building, that there needs to be a door there, and then on the north side of the building, it looks like it's the main entrance point of the building. You have handicaps faces identified, what looks to be from the architectural that. Uh, a main entrance at that point, which is great, but there's two main entrances there, one on the other side as well. On the northeast side, it seems like there should be associated handicap parking spaces.
We can reconfigure the striping, it's a simple uh, that's a striping change to coordinate with the uh building. Updated building elevations, and definitely I agree that the striping will be reor- re-updated. To specify that both of those points having.
Both entrances, right?
Correct, based on the function of those doors, I mean, if the. West, uh, the east side door isn't particularly used for the public or for employees, it's an emergency exit or something like that, you wouldn't put your handicap spaces way down there.
Well, I think by code, you need uh two-thirds uh of your egress points have to be accessible. So if we have three egress points on this plan, they all need to be accessible.
Accessible to egress with a wheelchair, a walker, a ramp, or whatever, but that doesn't mean that's where you put the handicap spaces, cause you can't go in there.
Good, well, whatever life safety code the architect follows, we'll definitely, I'll stripe them to be handicap, we have enough pavement to do it, it's just. I'm gonna stripe it, we've agreed to 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 update the handicap spacing to be consistent with the proposed ADA entrance points, absolutely, yes, sir.
Yep, understood, I think that the certain members of the board wanna put eyes on it, and um have a feel that. You know, they understand how it would work.
Then one more for you.
Yes, sir.
On the um, the loading dock area with the tractor trailer parking, you have um your underground. Uh, water retention, is there any need or requirement for any sort of oil separation in those? Could we have that?
Well, proposing.
Not necessarily grease trap, but um.
Yeah, well, we have um.
Do you have that? I didn't see.
Well, we are proposing to add the request of the DPW in this area, put a hydrodynamic separator. There was no request or imposed by the DPW for any uh hydrodynamic separators in this area. Although we did specify that the catch basins have uh a oil trap in them. For pre, this is pre-treatment you're talking about, so these catch basins will have an oil hood. To prevent those from entering the system.
Okay.
But in this area, we'll have an enhanced hydrodynamic separator for that, collect that portion of the site at the request of the.
Okay, I didn't see that on the catch basins, thank you.
Yeah, that was one of those comments, I I haven't submitted the updated, uh that was the initial staff comment review that suggested that. So you wouldn't have, so sorry.
And then one more question for those more familiar, but there was discussion early on about um. About the requirements or separation architecturally in the breakup, I know there's still some question there, but is there any requirement on the height? Of that, where, you know, it shows the depth and the width of it, but does it have to go a certain height off the ground?
No, I think the, well, the the sense of breaking up the facade is that it's a vertical breakup from top to bottom. It's not just sort of a six-foot indentation at a six, eight-foot height, and the rest of the building is. Um, continuing the same wall, but, so I had that same thought as well. But in terms of the overall height regulation, Merrimack doesn't have a height limit.
No, no, I meant the breakup, right, so the the front, the the north side of the building shows the entrances that. Go all the way up to the top of the roofline and beyond, which I think looks appropriate.
Yeah.
The backside where the loading docks are only have just the bump up, up and around the uh, the loading docks itself.
Yeah, that's an important comment that I was thinking as well, these um are clearly uh effective ways to break up a facade. Top to bottom and six feet deep, and I assume they'll will check all the dimensions to make sure they meet, but some of the ones that you did on the other two facades. Um, looked like, you know, a canopy over the top and.
I'm actually gonna go back to something, I don't mean to interrupt you, about this waiver. And go back to something that the contractor told me about these facades. That they do meet the the ordinance requirements in terms of the specific depths and widths that were mentioned, and for those reasons, I'm not asking to waive that. We're agreeing to comply with the architectural requirements, except for along the the main railroad, the CSX line. I I was confused about that in my initial presentation, having thought more through things. I realized that our intent is not to waive those requirements, is to meet those requirements, and I've been given. From the contractor, you know, word of these elevation views that we're looking at now do meet those, although it's not dimensioned. I'm stating, you know, putting out there that it's our intent to meet that ordinance, just so you know.
So there's a couple of parts to my response to that, first of all, glad to hear that you don't want the waiver, we, you know, won't take one up if you don't need one. Um, I appreciate that your um contractor believes that these meet the standard. Um, third part of that answer is we get to decide that, not him. Um, and I don't know if I agree with that interpretation, that this, that these canopies over the doorways count as breaking up the facade.
Sure, absolutely.
In the way described by the ordinance, and it seems like Fuss and O'Neil also didn't agree with that.
No problem, I just wanted you to know that that was new information, I wanted to give you that.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate it, and um it I I I have a feeling it'll take a little bit more. Um, to meet the regulation along this side, and I think the other side had even less um features around one of the doorways. Um, and I think it takes a little bit more, um to Mark's point, I think uh vertical means, you know, to the. To the top of the building and down, um breaking it up with uh a- as described by Fuss and O'Neil. A six to ten feet um depth change over a course of X number of feet for each one. Forty to eighty feet.
Got it.
And typically that um ends up being a jog in the side of the building. Um, I, we have, and this is important to know, is we have taken up waivers of those kinds of things and been sympathetic to them. For for a site like this, where the visual impact to the public is minimal, because. We know that making your building funky shaped makes it really tough to use inside. Um, you know, having an eight or ten-foot jog in the side of a warehouse building in the interior is kind of killed space, so. Um, don't be afraid to ask for a waiver if you think you need one, but um if you don't ask for one, then. You know, full on compliance with everything Fuss and O'Neil says.
Good.
Um, other comments or questions on that? Thank you, but, uh, okay, if there's no further questions of the applicant, uh, let's uh go through the process of holding a a public hearing. And with that in mind, if there are any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in, now is your chance. Going forward, sir, both of you, whichever one wants to go first, don't matter to me. Uh, you can come forward to the table and sit down if you want, you don't have to stand at the microphone, I mean, whatever you prefer, but if you're more comfortable there, just introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Uh, yes.
Have a seat. You got a good voice, I was. You got a good voice, I was, I was picking you up when you're standing.
Hi, my name is Arvid Dalblum, I live at Ten King Street, I am the abutter, can you guys hear me right?
Yeah, we can hear you great.
Okay, good, uh, I'm the abutter of this gentleman, Colt Refining. Um, so I, I just, um, this is my first time, uh, we bought the house maybe three, almost four years ago before COVID happened. When we bought the house, it was surrounded by trees, it was beautiful. Um, unfortunately, you know, I didn't understand real estate and how that stuff goes. And someone bought the land and cut all the trees down, which, you know, was disappointing, unfortunately. Um, and then now I was made aware that they're going to build a, uh, big warehouse back there. Um, and I understand it's good for the town, um, you know, I, I understand business and that's, that's good. I also have a one-year-old daughter, um, and my neighbors have several kids, and the people across the street off the corner have several kids. So I wanted to come to this meeting to understand exactly what's going on. Um, I went to school for business, I don't, I don't know much about engineering. Um, so I just wanted to clarify, like, are you guys going to use our, the King Street access to access the warehouses, are there gonna be picked up traffic there? Again, there's a lot of kids that play in the street, I'm worried about the fence as well. Um, you know, I, I am a, a substance abuse counselor, I work in, um, drug and alcohol treatment, my wife does the same thing. We don't make a ton of money, um, so we can't, when I first learned about this, I, I looked into possibly building a fence. Again, I, I wanna keep my daughter safe, and, um, I, I can't afford it, unfortunately. So I wanted to propose possibly putting up some type of wooden fence for safety, I'm afraid, like, I, I don't want my daughter wandering over there, there's gonna be tractor trailer trucks, all of that stuff. So I guess I, I just wanted to, yeah, again, voice my, my concern, um, and see what I, what I can do about it.
Thank you for your comments, they're great comments and important, and, um, we'll address them with the applicant when they get up, uh, to talk about it. Um, I think, um, it doesn't appear that they intend to use King Street to access their site.
Okay.
Um, and I, I, I know that, um, as you presented, the information is probably out of nervousness or, or whatever the way you phrased it, but you suggested, are, are we going to do it, or any of it? Them, I mean, we're, we're reviewing it to decide whether it meets our regulations or not, but it's the applicant's proposal to do what they want with their land. Um, I have a feeling that, we already had some discussion about the end of King Street and whether there should be a fence there or some other, uh, material to blockade it. Um, and I think the applicant, uh, shares your desire not to have any cross-traffic between you and your daughter and your family and their site, and for, for all the same reasons, they don't want little kids playing where the trucks are gonna go either.
Okay.
Um, so we'll have a discussion with the applicant when they get to come back up and, uh, and make sure that we've got some real good understanding as to how that would be.
Great.
So it, it may not necessarily be the exact kind of fence that you would build for yourself if you could, but I think protecting them will make a lot of sense.
Okay.
And, maybe, is there, is that fence gate thing still there, or did they take that down?
What exists at the end of King Street right now, at the very end of the driveway?
Yes, it's a metal fence, it's kind of fallen down.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's chained up, I thought it was the neighbor across the street, I thought he owned it and chained it up. I've never seen anybody use it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you for all your service, thank you.
Okay. Hello, sir.
Hello, good ev, good evening.
Good evening, settle in when you are ready, get comfortable, then introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you all for your service too, by the way, I appreciate it. Um, I'm Richard Calica, uh, I am a, uh, I own property in the, in the area, um, behind the railroad tracks, I'm also here representing, uh, Larry Doty Group that is an abutter. And I also have concerns with the property that abuts on the other side of the railroad tracks. That I have, uh, contract issues, with a contract, um, involving that property. How do I, can you give me a minute to get this set up?
Okay, I'm not sure that's, um, is that the applicant's computer or our computer, I don't know that, that's.
It's the town's laptop.
It's the town's, okay, then, yeah, just find a place to plug it in on the side and let her go on the back.
Oh, I think you have your, uh, I could probably use yours, I just need a certain page, okay. I think you're supposed to eject it first. Go ahead. Thank you.
That's my goal.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my goal.
To be the place to get you.
Yeah, that's why, you know, if they're gonna show up, we must just do them.
Yeah.
Get rid of the call, get them to do something across there, even if it's deep down.
Is there somebody that can help me blow up this map, um, map, it's on, what was submitted? Left? Still can't see it. Okay.
If you want to zoom in on a particular section in the lower right part of the screen is the magnifying glasses for plus and minus.
There we go. Okay, my concern is, um, maybe it's a different, there are easements that come from, uh, the property that, uh, Doty, uh, has rights to over out this way. And there's, you can see the easement, there is an easement, um, I think that's, on the plan, they show the eat, hang on.
I believe the easements are south of the existing building, correct?
They're
So that would be down.
West of the existing building. They start south of the existing building, they come around and they come up, and they come out, so there's access to King Street.
Okay.
And, um, my concern is you're putting parking spaces in that area here, and you're also putting snow storage in the easement area. Now, I, I heard that they're looking to have these easements removed by the town council, but I don't believe the town council has, they're not looking to do that?
No, well, I don't know, um, you know more about the easements than I would at the moment, but, um, there are many easements there, overlaying each other. One of them is the right-of-way for King Street cul-de-sac, and that's the one the town council could have authority over.
No, I'm not talking, it's this one right here, this, this access here, I'm, I'm not sure. King Street.
Um, that one actually is south of King Street, I think.
I think it is south of King Street.
You're right. The only one they're talking about town council doing anything with is discontinuing that cul-de-sac that's never been built at the end of King Street, they're not talking about any, any other easements.
Yeah, the other drainage easements, utility easements, whatever there may be that's there.
There are access easements that run along here, down to the property to the south.
Okay.
And I thought there was one map that showed that, hang on, let me. Where am I, can you help me get that? I apologize.
I need to apologize.
Okay. I'm getting older and slower. This probably shouldn't went, there you go. Yes, yep. Okay, now you can see that the easement that runs up through here into, right up in here.
Yes, sir.
And out that way, there are parking spaces being placed in that easement.
Okay.
Interfering with that easement. That is a concern, that is one concern.
So, um, let me ask you a question, um, do you know if that's a utility easement or a drainage easement?
It's an access easement.
It's an access easement?
Yes.
Is that, um, labeled on your plan as an access easement or?
Yes.
Okay, um, and what does it provide access to?
It provides access to this property down, um, gotta get situated.
It doesn't.
Get access to over, over here, and down over here into the Star Drive access.
Okay.
Okay.
Gotcha.
So my concern is with the access, putting parking spaces or trailers or snow removal in that access area. The other concern I have is with, um, hang on.
Do you, um, Mr. Calica, does the access easement benefit your property or somebody else's property, or what does it do?
It benefits, it benefits the pro, benefits Mr. Doty's property.
Okay, and you're speaking for him tonight?
I am speaking for him as well as myself, and it also benefits the property back here.
So are you, when you say you're speaking for him, did he ask you to speak for him, or you're just arguing in his favor, okay?
Yes.
Gotcha, and then does it access the property back there, so it flows all the way? It doesn't cross the railroad track, because the railroad track wouldn't permit it, the access easement.
Okay, let me.
If you, i- i- if you have a plan that says that it's there, I'll take your word for it, but.
I do. You want the plan?
Yeah, of course. Okay, we're good at sharing. Thank you, sir.
Give one of these that I, um. This is. Back in 1841, when the railroad acquired properties. Easements were provided for projects.
Okay.
One of those easements is at Star Drive. The other easement is north of Star Drive onto um, Hope, uh, not Evan's property here.
Yep, I'm listening.
Um, I have a, a railroad plan of, the one that I handed out, let me put it up on the screen. Valuation plan, and this is from the National Archives, uh, the railroad used to have to provide, um, the ICC uh, valuation maps, which were very accurate. Uh, you will show, see right there that there is a crossing, the farm crossing that's referenced in the deed is there on the property. That, that crossing still exists on paper. Additionally, you have, um, all the drainage that they spoke of going to, I'm work, by the way, I'm working on the, all the research to get back to the 1941 deeds to bring that, those crossing rates forward. Uh, but it's a, it's a task, because they're not online when you go back that far. Also, if you go down to their plans, where they're draining their property on the southeast of their property under the railroad tracks to the 30, 36-foot covert.
Yep.
Make sure I get to the right page here. Third page. Fourteen. Thank you very much.
What page am I looking for?
Fourteen. The easement agway has been provided for that covert or agway was provided, which was the predecessor of Avon at this property here, the initial property allows that covert to be used for their stormwater runoff. All the excess capacity that's not used by that property is remain, remain in the use of, um, the current owner, which is now CSI. And if we go to those deeds. It's a drainage easement being provided for the purpose of collecting drainage and disposing in stormwater surface from the property of the, of the grantee. Uh, that grantee is, was agway at the time, which was limited to the southern portion of that property. If and to the extent that the grantee should not be using the full capacity from time to time hereafter, the grantor shall have the right to connect with and use the excess capacity of the drainage system. So anything that is not being used in that drainage pipe on the southern portion, uh, of the initial building is the right of CMI who is across the tracks through that pipe. Also, um.
Say that again, because this, that's not, this is looking at somebody on the east side of the railroad tracks connecting into it in order to use it for drainage to the west side. The water won't flow the other direction, so there's nothing that people on the west side, the east side would do.
Anything that is not used from the west side going through the river is the right of the grant, the grantor to have in, in the drainage pipe.
So, I'm, I'm combining the review, the reading of the words here with what's sitting there on the ground, and, um, the property to the east of the river doesn't need anybody's permission to do anything in that pipe. Um, it's on his property and, and all that, there would never be a reservation like this in a deed for that. This deed reservation relates to somebody on the west side of the railroad tracks, adding into the pipe to flow under the tracks. Um, not somebody on the east side of the river whose pipe is on their own property to continue on the river, which they abut themselves and could drain directly into.
Right, it says this easement is no way restricts the right of the grantor to make, or.
That's right, and that's normal.
Other use of the easement area and the grantor reserves to themselves the rights, not inconsistent with the right of the grantee to use the easement for the purpose stated. The purpose stated of the grantee is only to drain the property that the grantee acquired. Now, I believe this is new to the applicant, information to the applicant as of, I believe, today. So I, I don't think the applicant has time, had time to address this. But I also think it should be addressed before the board goes to their approval. I also have concern in the fact, in the zoning board variance that was, was allowed, I think it was, it was a variance or whatever, I forget what they call it.
Variance.
Variance. They relied on the planning board to look at a lot of things in that meeting that came under questions, such as the hazardous material that Colt Engineering deals with and the dangers that the, the sub-ground filter system might have when it's overloaded of some of the, some, something that could escape from their parking lot of that material into the drainage system into the river. That's also a concern. And that the zoning board, I believe, said that would be addressed by the planning board through their approval. And I didn't hear anything regarding that. Also, my, the other thing, I, I don't think the application is complete because there are a lot of things you've asked the applicant to do that he has yet to do. And I would have a concern voting on it before some of those things are addressed. And that's all I have. I thank you. Again, I thank you for your service and.
Thank you for your presentation and providing all the materials. I think it's an important issues to discuss with the applicant at various points, so.
I would also say it's a planning board tool. The concern is the property behind the railroad tracks isn't owned by, you know, it's, I think actually the property behind the north side of the railroad tracks is now owned by the town. But the problem, the property south of the railroad tracks is not. It's, it's private.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think he's east, but further down. Okay, thank you for that. Oh, yeah, don't forget your, your drive.
Give me one second. Don't want to ruin anything when I take it out.
Just fix it up.
He's gonna just eject it. Sometimes you lose stuff if you. All right, I'll just lose it. Okay. Make it quicker.
Close all the tabs.
I apologize. Thank you.
Are there any other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Come on forward, sir.
Good evening.
Take a moment to settle in and then when you're ready, introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
I just didn't know if.
Hand out stuff, but talk, talk by a microphone, but hand out stuff however you want. And just don't do both at once.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for your time. I'm Bob Scannell. My wife and I own Space Optics Research Lab and Scannell Family Real Estate. And we're the abutters to the north.
Okay.
Okay. And this is just a letter that you prepared with just a couple of points.
I think that might have been in my package. It looks familiar, the letterhead, but let's see. Are these copies or is this just one set? Okay, this is one set.
Is it the same letter? I think.
A November 2nd, 2023 letter? Is that what everybody's got in their package?
It is.
Yeah.
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 Okay, good. All right, tell us what about it? What's on your mind?
Rather than read the whole thing. Okay.
Go ahead.
Our point, our points are simple. The, the lot immediately to the south of us, as we understand it, had been owned by the property that we purchased and at some point had been demised. So our points one and two are that there's an emergency access easement that runs through our property to get to what used to be the pole barn. I think we, we were natural wood products and the pole barn was the seasoning barn for it. And as we were told, King Street is kind of a tight corner and the fire department wanted access through our property. And I think it got changed, but at one point the plan even had, well, there's trees that are going to go across that easement and there was going to be a retaining wall. There may still be a retaining wall, but our point is we would prefer not to have the property encumbered by that easement if the applicant is having the easement removed. Likewise, power went to that property across our property. There's a utility easement. They're petitioning to have that easement removed and we would like to have our property treated in kind. And the last one is the, it's been brought up a couple of times. It's, it's very close on their north, their north border with the, the parking lot and even the building. And I guess I don't know how the board could ensure that we're not going to have snow runoff coming onto our property. And is there a way that we could petition for relief at some point in the future? I, I don't know.
Okay. So let me ask questions about the easement. You, your, your package came with a couple of plans in it. Walk me through the plans and let me, help me understand what easement we're talking about that you are saying burdens your property and what does it do? And. What's that? I've got another set with my package. Pass those around that way. There's another set in here, too. So where is the easement?
Unfortunately, I'm not as well-prepared as the previous gentleman, but.
All right.
So literally power comes down Karen Street. It's, it's on this, this map. It comes down Karen Street. There's a pole pretty much right on our property line. We bring power underground to, to feed our building and a spur comes down across our property and then along the border and down out to the existing pole barn.
Could you draw that on the plan that's in front of you and then pass it around to us so we can look at it? I have a pen. You need it? Where I have a pen? I used that one. There it is. And what is, it's, you said power comes down that way? What is the power supply? From whom to whom?
It's to the pole barn, which the, the applicant is going to, to replace. And they're going to bring it down King Street.
The pole barn you're referring to is that kind of a straightish shed down on the north end that they'd be removing?
Correct.
And so the power comes to there?
It's actually in the footprint of the new building, I think, or very close.
And you're referring to Karen Street, which actually comes off of DW Highway and goes straight down towards the river?
Well, Karen Street is only fed by Herrick. They blocked it off up by DW.
Oh, they did, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
So you come down Herrick and you can turn left or right on Karen, but you can't get anywhere else?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. All right, hang out for a second while we take a look at that.
Sure.
Yeah, he's got, there's a light gray line and it is marked easement to be discontinued, but. Is what the applicant, what the butter is interested in or whether there's something else. There's Jennifer Drive. Sits this way.
There we go. Here's Karen Street. Here's Herrick.
Yeah. Actually, we got it upside down.
Herrick's, Herrick's bridge here. And comes to Karen.
Okay. Almost the same way as the drainage easement goes? I guess that's King Street. Okay. All right. So thank you for that. We'll talk to the applicant about it and see what their intentions are. There are some limits on our authority to have them discontinue things unless they're already part of their plan, but we'll certainly have the conversation with them about it. Any other comments about the general proposal that they have there? In terms of snow and your questions about snow, we'll again, talk to the applicant about it. It seems they're representing that they won't put snow in that part of their lot. It is obviously a very tiny little bit of property outside of the pavement area. And although they can't push snow onto your property, if it melts and the water goes that way and it doesn't, it isn't more than the natural flow of water would be, they're not prevented from doing that. But as long as it doesn't increase the flow of water over what it normally would be and they obviously can't push snow onto your property.
Yeah. Well, there'll be a fence there. We'll, we're putting up a fence.
You're putting up a fence along that edge, too?
We have to. Yeah, we have to have the property secured.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Are there any other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? All right, we'll close the public hearing. I'll ask the applicant to come back up. Yeah. Okay. Let's take them in order that the folks came and testified. And I think you heard, I think, from board members about the end of King Street and the desire to have, you know, some separation there. Yeah, you can feel free to close all that stuff. I think if the, if the board were to put as a condition of approval that should the town discontinue the cul-de-sac, that you build a fence along the, and that edge of the property, would the applicant have any objection to a requirement like that?
We'd be open to it, but we also, I just want to point out that we have already proposed a pretty hardy, you know, hedge of landscaping, effectively a green fence already as designed. And I think that meets and provides for the buffering that, that's being sought after, whether it's a chain link fence or a natural fence. I think we've already addressed that condition. And even I'd agree to put in a few more, you know, hardy, evergreen shrubbery, you know, to create a, a greater buffer.
So I, I think there, there's two things going on at the same time. Buffering between residential and commercial or residential and industrial is required in our ordinance and there's different gradations for what buffering requires and how thick and how dense and all that. The second is, you know, kids, which kids are harder to buffer than light and wind and air. And I know that the gentleman was talking about his daughter, but I remember little boys would love to build forts and dense cover and shrubbery and greens. All that stuff that you're planning on putting is the perfect place to tunnel into and play.
So you're talking about specifically this area right here? This, let's say 100 feet or so of land, of real estate. There's that 10 King Street and we're talking about.
Yeah.
That's unused open space. So you're talking about 100 feet or plus or minus of land effectively?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and so putting a fence, I don't even know if, I'm talking about a full 100 feet up and down the full length, but at the end of Herrick, of King Street there and, you know, maybe a few feet extending north and south is what I had in mind. I don't know, other board members can speak for themselves. But actually putting some kind of, you know. Yeah, vinyl fence, stockade fence, something that's attractive and fits with the landscaping plan that you have going on there, but would stop an actual dog from running through or a kid from running through or something that people that want to walk their dogs or something that would, you know, find a way to bore through.
Yeah, I think that would be acceptable.
Okay. And Robert, how does this meet up with our requirement for a buffet, buffer between residential and commercial?
So that was in the old regulations, so that section no longer exists in the current regulations. So as long as they have something proposed, which they have, then we're fine.
Okay. As long as it's satisfactory to the board and we think that it'll effectively buffer it.
You know, we could do that or we could provide an allowance for them to put their own fence up.
I think that may be a choice, too. Thank you for being willing to consider that. I think we'll see where the board goes with all of its discussion tonight. Does anyone have any further discussion about King Street and the end from what the applicant had brought up? Oh, the butter had brought up? Okay. Then the second comment that we had was the butter who had some interest in understanding an access easement that exists and whether it's being obstructed by the plans that you have here. I think that for some time, those access easements have not been used and utilized or enforced and including the gates and the crossing of the railroad tracks. To some extent, those are private rights between abutting landowners and if the person with the beneficial interest comes forward and says, hey, I want to use Max as easement, you would have to either accommodate them or have the legal battle to say you don't have that right anymore.
And it's our position as well is that, you know, my recollections, and I'm not intimate with the usage, but I submit your statements. But if, in fact, we were showing a couple of temporary trailer storage sites in that vicinity. We have no intent to plow snow in that area. It's like a 30-foot easement, I think. And so if the beneficiaries intend to access through that area, which we're actually improving to improve access by paving and making it level, you know, we would, as neighborly businesses, certainly make accommodations for them to get through there.
So that access easement makes a right turn and goes right down your driveway, right?
Yeah, it comes through here and then it comes down and it continues through this open space.
So as it sits here today, none of that's paved or cleared or whatever? That's just a field?
Yes, brush, those pictures I showed with the brush. And it's like there's some mounds of mulch actually and sod in that area. So those are some hilly conditions that'll all be, it'll improve to access, actually.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily achieve access all the way through the entire length of the easement, but as to this section, it's far more useful post-development than it is pre-development.
Yes, I would agree.
So where does it go at the end of your pavement? And where does it turn right and go towards the railroad tracks?
Well, this is the, it continues southerly to the Corbin development.
Okay.
And from that point of view, we don't, so actually you can see it here. There, there you go. This L-shaped is, I believe, what you're referring to.
And it just rejoins that property? Does it go further after that?
Well, we're showing it continuing to here. And at that point, I don't know.
I think those are drainage easements.
Yeah, I don't know at this point if it turns and goes where it goes because I'm not proposing any alterations to anything in that area.
Okay. All right, so that little bit of grass between the end of your parking lot and the Corbin parcel, certainly nobody's tried to use this access easement for anything, but you're not doing anything to block it. Go a little bit north? Yeah, that little bit of grass right there. I mean, it's not, it's like somebody can drive across it, but you're not obstructing it.
Correct.
Okay. Talk to me about the culverts and the easements that support it and what your understanding of who's got rights related to that?
So my understanding is, and I've reviewed this with our survey department, who did the research. Well, essentially the comment was made about, you know, capacity restrictions and such, which I've said, seen in the deed, the original conveyance, you know, from Richards to Agway via now Visa Colt. And so they basically said like, if you take up more capacity, like we have, essentially we can deny that or something. But so this project does not actually increases the capacity. We're reducing the rate of runoff to that point. So there's no issue with capacity reduction in that by virtue of that. And also my understanding of the subdivision, why the other parcels? But that's, that's my, my answer to that question. I think that if you have need follow-up, that's. I think that if you have need follow-up, that's, that's, that's what we're doing.
Okay, so let me summarize that. So the 36-inch pipe, at some point back in history, somebody got some of the access to that, but not all of it. And that's continued up until the modern time. And whatever you're doing here today is not adding more flow to that pipe.
Well, it's, yes. So when that subdivision plan was created, on my understanding, for the Agway subdivision, which is where it referenced the lots that had access to that culvert,
Yep.
that easement rights, that was only, the, the only reason it referenced that is because they were, it was by virtue of the subdivision occurring. There was other prescriptive rights through in the neighborhood that had rights to flow there because that's where gravity went. And that's what I showed you in my map, my drainage map.
I got you.
So because of the reference in that specific subdivision, attached those rights to the newly created lot, that's where the reference, the specific reference came from.
Okay.
With a specific subdivision project, you understand generally what.
I do. I do. Okay. Can you show us on your, on this plan where the drainage easement crosses over to the property line towards railroad tracks?
Here. Right here.
Okay. How far does that culvert go? Does it stay in the pipe all the way to the river or does it?
According to a, a plan of when the pipe was constructed, which I have, it shows it going essentially to the river. And that's an older plan.
Okay.
It shows it's to Marimac River in a pipeline via an underground drainage line across the abutting Easterly parcel.
Okay, so it doesn't daylight anywhere over there on that side of the river until it gets to the river?
Not, not according to the, the plan of reference associated with that by T.F. Moran from the 80s.
Sounds good. All right, I don't have any other questions about, about that testimony. What do you know about the Space Optics folks, butters and their?
Sure.
Easement, and I think there is a note on one of your plans that says perhaps that an easement is being discontinued in that area. C6-1 is the plan that he was showing that has a note that says easement to be discontinued.
Okay. Thank you. So. Okay, yeah, so that's a proposed easement to be discontinued, I believe.
Okay.
So that area is shown.
Seems to be the easement that he was drawing on his map. I mean, actually, he probably don't have a map. Do you have the map that he drew the easement?
Here it is. So this is the plan and there's the easement.
You want to see the thing?
There's the utility easement and there's the.
Okay, yeah.
This.
All I know is what he handed to me and drew, so don't have to me explain.
Okay, so that's exactly matching. It's a different plan, but it's the same.
Yeah.
As I have.
Same easement on here as you have here. So.
Yep.
He's saying that that's currently used for the routing of electrical wires to the pole barn. Is that an easement that you guys are going to continue to use or, or wish to maintain the right to use?
Yeah, we wish to maintain the right to use, but given the benefit to our property, the electrical demand from this project, the fact that the ever-source design is not completed, we may need to utilize that. We at this point, you know, reserve the right respectfully to keep that easement rights.
Okay. If the ever-source plan is, does come through for you and you get your three-phase down King Street, would that change your view of it with the neighbors? And again, we're getting in an area where I can't make you do anything.
Because then we're giving up, that's a legal counsel question, that's a private matter between two private parties. Giving up those rights is something that, you know, would have to be.
Yes, I'm not going to make you commit to anything here tonight.
Correct.
I wouldn't make you commit to anything here tonight. And we don't have the authority to make you give up your easements anyway. I'm just asking whether the applicant would consider having a conversation with the neighbor about it.
They'd consider having a conversation with the neighbor about it, absolutely.
Lyndy, do you have a comment?
It says here to be abandoned. Who said it's to be abandoned?
That's an old plan. I don't think it was ever recorded. This is a plan that was done. That's another, so this is not the, that's a different easement you're referring to. That's for the, the emergency access.
This is access.
Yeah, so that's the other one that they mentioned, which I've seen a few plans that also say it was proposed to be abandoned in the past. These, this plan was not from the registry, so I haven't found the recorded version. So something has happened where either, I don't even know, this is not even the subject parcel that my client owns. This is the neighbor's parcel and.
Can you get that a little bit on the plan so we can see the rest of it?
Yeah, and we are, we would defer to the fire emergency services on whether or not they would, that benefits the town. We're okay with it.
So you're not saying to be abandoned? You're just saying this is some extraneous plan?
They're asking us to abandon it. They, the butter is asking us if we could abandon that, which is the town's benefit.
And that's a legal question.
We would defer to the town.
If I, if I could speak to this, please. We have not been approached at all. This is the first I'm hearing about this easement being removed and we are absolutely not in favor of the emergency access easement being removed. In fact, I would require that the easement be connected to the Colt refining site to benefit both properties in an emergency. So if we had to access the Karen Street site, which is a very congested neighborhood, residential neighborhood actually, we would be able to access it from the Colt refining site in the event of an emergency at the Karen Street, Karen Street site. So we are absolutely not in favor of that being extinguished.
Okay, and the applicant isn't necessarily proposing that it be discontinued. I'm not necessarily, I don't have my bearings for where this is in relation to what you're building.
The pole barn is right here in the corner. Okay, so this is the space testing scammel facility.
Okay.
It's south. And here's our subject property. There's the pole barn. There's the easement through the, the parking area of the scammel property.
Okay.
It ends on our site because it benefits the, our parcel, the, you know, sclara parcel, it's called.
Is that where the power line also runs? Because they're talking about.
Yeah, it's, and I can't actually, I think the power line may actually, and this is not my property, these are two abutting properties.
I get it.
It appears that this is on another abutting property because that looks to me like a property line. It looks like that actually encompasses.
Straddle, two properties.
Yeah.
Okay. I get it.
And as for the snow storage, we agree to not snow store, store snow along that narrow strip of land along our shared property line to the north with them. And we'll have duly noted.
Okay.
And vegetated, you know, to prevent, you know, that as well.
Thank you. One of the interested butters spoke of the idea that some of the metals processed by your client could involve hazardous waste. And I just don't know any of the status of that. Can you discuss that a little bit?
Okay.
The plan that you're showing on screen is one that you just found in the registry. Where did you find this?
This was our survey or pulled this as a record plan. I don't know. This does not assign to a plan reference, which means this plan was not recorded.
Is it signed by a?
No, this plan is not signed. It was just found as, I don't know, with our research somewhere, this Nordstrom plan by Tom Barubi.
What's the date of the plan?
07, November 26.
All right, so the, so the planning board guy that didn't sign this is over there. That's him, not me.
Yeah, so. Essentially.
Yeah.
Trying to answer this particular.
That, that Allwood Recycling, I'm actually familiar with that project, that never happened. They proposed the project and it never happened.
Okay.
So essentially, the, this is like hand manual disassembly of metal, sorry, precious metals. And then it's sorted and packed and sent off-site. There's not any significant amounts of hazardous chemicals utilized in the processing or disassembly. There's some water used within to cool some of the equipment and such. But there's no significant or air permitting or any specific advanced industrial waste permitting associated with the processing and the operations at the existing facility, nor would be at this facility. They have blast furnace for, as a, for part of the recycling process. So their main, I think, source of emit, of waste is dust particulate. And they have like a baghouse system or collection system to take that and once that is full, it's removed, that's inside the building interior, that is removed from the building through a truck, you know, that's taken those, that dust off-site in accordance with state and local regulation. So this is not a significant user or processor of large amounts of regulated hazardous waste of that nature. It's not the nature of the business.
Okay. For the trucks that are there, are those full trucks getting ready to go somewhere else, empty trucks?
That both, they get delivery of the raw material, you know, like the electronics equipment, just large tractor trailers. And then they also haul that off-site to like smelters and other processing plants. So it's all handled through internal loading dock facilities with the trucks back in, it's all under the roof. They run a clean operation, everyone has testified and they, you know, have not had any issues that I'm aware of, of content, any type of issues with, you know, pollutant or any type of releases of regulated substances of that nature.
Not that it's evidence of anything, but I heard the same thing about your client. They had great reputation.
Thank you.
I don't know anything about how you recover metals out of electronics, but I always thought the gold and silver was recovered chemically.
Some of it goes into a bath solution. The most it's manually shredding and then they do some type of stripping and stuff like that. Those materials are, they're stored and then they're, they're not dumped into the drainage or sewage systems. They're stored internally in small volumes and then they're sent off-site to regulated disposal facilities.
I got you. Okay. Board members, do you have any other comments for the applicant based on the public testimony or anything else? Nelson?
Oh, just on that particular subject that the applicant just brought up. I, as anyone from the town side looked at this hazardous material.
Definitely it's representing they don't have any hazardous material, but yeah. Finish your question because you're on the track.
Alleged, the alleged hazardous material. If someone looked at it from the town's point of view to say that, to agree with this man or one of our consultants, I don't know if they had the opportunity to review it. But I think somebody from the town should look at it and.
Yeah.
And, you know, if, I know we've often said, well, it's up to the state to regulate these things. And we haven't had such good luck with the state always. And I just want to point that out to the board that maybe we ought to have a look at it before we say, okay.
Hey, I think you might have some insight, so want to share with us? So come to the microphone or? I know that we already closed the public hearing, but it looks like you got something good to say. Sure you are. Go to, either microphone, the table or there, introduce yourself. Well, tell me what you have first and then you got to go to a microphone. Okay.
I need to have this at a microphone and I need to have the speaker identified, please.
Yes, please introduce yourself and then tell us what you just handed me.
Yes, so I'm Sandra Scanell. The, with Scanell Family Real Estate and Space Optics to the north of, of the proposed property.
I got you.
And so I received those two. One is the permit for, one is a summary and one is, the other one is the permit for their hazardous waste. I didn't get a chance to look over it because we weren't notified about this until a couple of weeks ago. It was away.
So it looks like what you handed me, the one document called, it says state permit to operate at the top. It's dated June 30th, 2022. And it says that Colt refining has been granted a state permit to operate for four incinerators for processing precious metals, precious metal-containing materials and one emergency generator. And it goes through the details of what's going on there and has the plans and the rest of their permit attached to it. And the other is a permit application review summary, which is apparently the notes of the process that, that the ES went through and ultimately deciding whether to issue the permit.
Right, I believe there are some hazardous emissions into the air out of their smokestacks because we see, you know, emissions coming out periodically.
Understood. Let me flip through this a little bit and then pass it around to my colleagues. But thank you for sharing it with us.
Give it to you.
Consumer incinerator maximum design capacity permitted. And they've got some pollution control equipment that's regulated. It looks like DES is certainly looking at the output of the.
I haven't heard any indication that Colt is incinerating anything.
It looks like they are because they have.
Well, they have, they have a permit to do it, but I haven't heard that they are doing it.
Colt refining has several incinerators that they have been using for years.
Okay.
They do have, they are all regulated, they are scrubbed, they're all done by the state.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for providing that. You can go back for it. Sorry for the interruption and taking things out of order. Come on. Okay. So it looks like the permits that she offered up are consistent with what you said, that there's more incinerators on the property. They're used in certain ways with the processing of it. And it does look like they're regulated and DES is tuned into what they produce and what they filter and all of that. It, I didn't look at what period the time it takes for those to be renewed as permits or what inspections that DES does. But I'm actually comforted by the idea that DES is on-site taking a look at these things. I don't know who at the town would, to answer Nelson's question, I don't know who in the town would show up and know anything about anything for what to inspect.
The building permit process, my understanding is they'll look into some of that because that's the type of interior building usage. They'll need to know details on what is stored inside the building and how much of it. And so that would also have a, a review at, to some degree at the, at that step.
And all reportable, all reportable quantities of hazardous materials have to be sent to us every year and are recorded in our office.
Okay.
Colt refining does not actually, to the best of my knowledge, they do not have a lot of reportable quantities of hazardous materials in their operation.
That's what I meant, but they didn't, my understanding, they didn't store a significant amount of these substances on that, in the premises.
We're expanding their operation a great deal. I mean, you're talking historically, John, and, and what we're talking about here is the future where the substantial increase in the size of the plant and possible operation.
We definitely are. From my perspective, what I heard, what I'm interested to hear and what I'm actually glad to have heard is that all of the right people are already tuned into what's going on there and watching it and keeping up with it and everybody's doing reports and DES is involved with permits that are needed periodically. And all of those things are a higher level of scrutiny and review and scientific evidence than anything the planning board would be capable of. So for me, all I wanted to know was the right people are on the job and they are, it seems like. So, okay. But you, if you just don't see it that way or whatever, please say so.
I just question, you know, are the right people looking at it? And I'm just raising the question because we've had some bad experience in this town with emissions that were approved.
Indeed.
That's all I'll say.
Yes, indeed. We've got a park you can't dig in and we've got a plastics manufacturer leaving town and some other things going on, so. Okay, other comments or questions of the applicant by anybody? It sounds like there are some revisions and some business that needs to take place between now and a next meeting. And I want to make sure we understand what those are and then talk to you about when you want to come back. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Board members or Robert, help me out with the things that we discussed that we think we needed to see or want to know or review. I think the primary one that I recall is the understanding of the compliance with the architectural standards for the building and whether the facades need to be broken up or a waiver could be appropriate. I think that was, yeah, whether the, the breakups have to go full height.
I just had one more question, Mr. Chairman. When you asked the applicant to show us where the crossing was that's been suggested by the butters.
Yes.
Here. He went over it so quick, I didn't see it on the map. And I wonder if you could just show it again so I know where that crossing is. And I wonder if you could just show it again so I know where that crossing is.
Yeah, certainly.
So there it is, right there on the bottom of that screen. That's the existing building. It's all shaded out in light gray and at the southern part of the property line, it crosses right on the word Boston there.
Is that, okay. All right, and that's that's the existing building we see there.
Yes.
Okay, I complained. Thank you.
So I think the other waivers that you discussed with the parking lot landscaping, I think is perfectly achievable. And then the, what was the King Street waiver that you had asked us for? Something related to King Street.
It was the location of the driveways.
Oh, yes, within 100 feet of each other. We can vote on those if the board is inclined to do so. If you want to clear those couple of waivers tonight. The the building facade one, I think we need more information to vote on. But I I don't think that you'll have any obstacles to those other two waivers at any point tonight or otherwise. Obviously, I only have one vote, but the board can disagree with me if it wants to. Do you want us to address those two waivers tonight while we're-
Yes, please.
Okay, board members with respect to-
If it can be done relatively briefly with respect to the other applications.
Yes, absolutely so. The parking lot landscaping waiver, because they've got some parking spaces across the east side of their building and all of their landscaping is to the north of the building, they would need a waiver from section, give me a second.
Appropriate section.
Yes, 3.11.1.1.1 Roman numeral 2, 0 square feet of interior parking space landscape on the west side parking area where 8% is required. Is anyone inclined to make a motion related to that?
Also move.
And is it because of strict conformity would be an unnecessary hardship or specific circumstances relative to subdivision or conditions of the land?
Specific.
Conditions, specific circumstances. Okay. Is there a second for Lynn's motion to grant the parking lot landscape waiver?
I'll second it.
Second by Halim. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining that waiver is granted? The second waiver relates to the driveway and its closeness to King Street and our regulation, which is 3.08.1.4, to permit a new driveway on Herrick Street to be less than 100 feet from an existing access point. What say you?
I will so move again based on strict conformity.
Motion to grant that waiver based on strict conformity, pose an unnecessary hardship. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? So that waiver is granted. So that I think is the, as far as we want to go with the discussion of waivers, we want to discuss that building one once we know more about what the situation is.
Sure.
What other business do we need to understand better from the applicant after tonight? Is it just about the building facade or are there other information that we need to have?
The potential screening at the end of the road.
Yeah, the potential to do screening. I think you've indicated the applicant's open to the idea. Put some specific details on that, assuming assuming that you're granted the ability to discontinue the cold sack and that you can do whatever you want there and however you would approach that. I think the easiest for the planning board is for there to be something you build on your plan rather than the than the contribution to the neighbor. Although if for whatever reason the neighbor is particularly enthusiastic about the other idea and you talk to them about it, we'll listen. We'll listen. Okay, other areas of the plan that we need to have addressed? Any follow up comments that you would want to make based on any of the public testimony about old easements and accesses and that sort of thing? Feel free to bring that back to us. I don't know what specific questions I have, but Nelson?
I just had one more thing on that list that the the butter to the north brought to our attention. He was concerned about water draining onto his property. I don't think it does, but I mean, he never clarified, we never got that clarified clearly that we're not draining water onto his property.
We're not draining water onto his property.
Nelson, I believe in some of the discussion, it has been noted that the natural slope of the property is away from-
Yeah, it's in the other direction.
Just wanted-
Well, it is proposed to be raised, but I've modeled and submitted, there's a, we're reducing the amount of land that actually drains even though it's level and it's grass. It's a 10 foot strip of land. There's effectively there's zero runoff going to the Scanell property.
So I don't necessarily want to put you to the task of submitting new plans for the next meeting right away based on just snow storage, but you did talk about removing snow storage labels from several places and that would be be a condition of approval that the-
What about the striping then too with the-
The handicap striping, yeah, we definitely want to understand where your entrances are.
So that'll be a submission of a new plan before the meeting, next meeting for you guys to review.
Just, yeah, just that one sheet that shows the handicap spaces and their proximity to the doors.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can be concluded on that that sheet. Okay.
Yes, no, there's no removal, uh, snow storage deleted from those couple of areas where you're not going to store stuff. No.
Okay.
Okay. Further discussion items. Nelson, do you want to see a drainage plan before we come together again?
I would very much like to, and since it's all done, it's a matter of just getting a copy of it. I understand.
Can you email that to Nelson or?
We can. It's it's over 200 pages, but-
Don't don't send it to me, just send it to him.
Yep.
I don't have to print it all. I can print the part I want.
Or you can stop in at the office and look.
Whatever you want to do. Okay.
It may not go through the email.
Any other areas where we want the applicant? Okay, so this is our, today is our first meeting in November. The deadlines for the second meeting are too close, so you could do first week of December or the third week of December.
First week, please.
December 5th, is that right, Robert? Is that achievable, Robert, with Thanksgiving and all that other fun?
So we would have to have all revised plans and documents submitted to us by November 14th in order for that to work.
It's next week.
One week from today.
That way we can submit them all around for town review, staff review, make sure we get all the comments updated.
What's the second? We'll take the second one.
December 19th, that would give you to November 28th.
So 12, 19, or 11, 28.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Then the next action for us, board members, is to continue this matter till the December 19th meeting. With no further notice to the butters. Also moved, is there a second? Second by Halim. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you very much for a complicated presentation on a on a big project. But also, I don't want to forget the compliments to your client for being good and having a good reputation for the business they do in town.
Pass it along. Thank you all for your interest.
Robert, need something?
If I could just ask Jason to hold on a minute, this, he's the engineer tied to the ultimate bimmer extension that we-
Ah, yes, Jason, hang out for a second. Don't leave yet. Okay. When I find my agenda again, item number three, let me get those into Robert's hands. Those DES permits. Okay, let's jump back to the item three on our agenda, which is the extension request for the ultimate bimmer site plan 106 Herrick Street Road, planning board 2022-39. The applicant was asking for additional time to meet its conditions of approval, but I think what we'll hear from Robert is that based on what we know today, a new proposal or a different proposal on that site would probably require a more comprehensive planning board review anyway. And so additional time to meet those conditions of approval may not do anything or function in any way. Robert, do I have that right or do you want to restate that?
Essentially, yeah. Essentially, yes. So the conditional approval is for a used car lot. The previous applicant who got that plan conditionally approved has since relocated further down Daniel Wester Highway and is currently in operation. So they will not be the anticipated user of this property. The applicant is understandably trying to keep that approval alive because it certainly, I'm sure enhances the sale price of the lot that's currently for sale. However, any proposal that does come forward, and we've fielded several inquiries from interested people, would have to come back to the planning board for a new design anyway. So our standpoint is why are we extending a plan that doesn't necessarily have any value for the board and preserving the rights of any changes in regulations protecting, you know, any if the board were to change a regulation, not that anything's imminent, but-
So unless the applicant sold the parcel to somebody that wanted to do exactly what he had drawn up?
It'd be back here.
It'd be back here again. If the applicant had somebody that bought it that doesn't want to do a car dealership, but basically still wants the same size building and parking lot?
That would still pose an issue because right now the current conditionally approved plan shows encroachment into the DOT slope easement and that's been part of the reason this has not been finally approved in the time that's been.
Okay, Jason, do you have any thoughts or comments on on this coming forward?
I wasn't involved in the original permitting. I'm aware of the project and specifics, some of the specifics of this and the requests and such.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Jason Hill with TF Moran. I'm Jason Hill with TF Moran. I'm here on behalf of Ultimate Bimmer on Herrick Street. And yeah, as was mentioned, they've invested capital on plans and such and have those as have a vested interest in preserving this approval. There's been specifics, as was stated already, that could be transferred or built by the same applicant, that specific site plan or something similar to or amendment of, you know, which is of interest to us in keeping this active. We've had a specific case with the DOT. They've turned over the district engineer to district engineer, not Richard Wansky, but the reviewer of plans. The DOT process has also been increasingly, we've seen very elongated without that specific change in agency, you know, review. Those things have led to delays in completion of this DOT coordination. And there's some town comments I think we've got to address, which we intend on fully and are committed to. And for those reasons, you know, I'd request that we are granted an extension of this, of a certain period of time to allow us to handle these. You know, we didn't control those conditions that have imposed delays on our project. And so I'd like to have some more time to and to finish addressing those things and plan on doing so.
Okay, what what length of extension are you asking for? Six months?
Whatever was in the letter, I'm sorry. I don't have the letter.
Six months, I think.
Six months.
Okay. Six months is what's typical. I just didn't see it in a note somewhere.
I'm sorry for that.
No, no worries. I get the I get the staff's point that if this isn't what's going to get built, then sort of what's the point of chasing it and ended up with signed plans that are just going to get replaced by something else at the same time. Not really any skin off our back if you chase that rainbow and then change your plans too. So I guess it's a coin flip, really.
And plans, as you know, get sold as plans, permitted plans and not built upon by the applicant too. You know, as a development, as a, you know, I'd hope the town, I'm sure the town respects it. They want to see this area developed. So that's just where we're at with it and we intend on not asking for further extensions. We'd really appreciate this and the owner would as well. We, in good faith, will, you know, resolve these matters immediately.
And part of staff's hang up on this was the plan was already conditionally approved once, then was withdrawn. The applicant moved, resubmitted, reconditionally approved and we're at the exact same point with no changes having ever been made in a couple of years now with that design.
Yeah, now if they had met all their conditions of approval, they'd still have an approved plan that they could build anytime, right?
Correct.
And that wouldn't expire. That's not like a subdivision that-
It would expire in five years.
Okay. And then if they sold it to somebody that decided to build a Kmart there instead of an ultimate bimmer, then everybody starts over again.
Yep.
And that's that's truth of every site plan, right? So with that in mind, I guess I'm not adverse to granting the continuance. I don't, I think it will, we will end up having a chance to review this with a new site. Very likely whenever the buyer comes forward, if it ever does come forward. But maybe it's somehow an easier process with an approved plan to build off of.
But they don't have an approved plan.
Well, yeah, we approved it.
Conditionally.
Yes, yeah, and they've got some conditions to meet, which they would have to meet in six months or persuade us to have this conversation again. These things are granted, you know, pretty routinely by us and any applicant could find themselves in this position where they don't really want to develop their thing again, but they want to sell it with a plan and the buyer can use it or don't, right?
It doesn't hurt us to approve this.
I don't think it does.
I I would be adverse to doing another one. But to do-
Get six months and that's all.
Yeah.
Other than that's a new request.
Yeah.
When, when did this originally get approved?
Which time, the first time or the second time?
Whatever they're working on for an approval now.
It was our planning board 2022-39, so it would have been late in the year, a year ago. So they've had 12 months to get to meet these things and they want six more after that. Which, you know, again, we get those requests for continuances pretty routinely. For not continuances, extensions of the time to meet your conditions.
But usually on something that's already been approved.
Oh, yeah, no, that's the only way that we come for. We voted and approved it with conditions and somebody needs more time for their conditions. Okay, does anybody have any strong feelings to say that we shouldn't do this? I know that it's a little bit of an inconvenience for the staff and things, but it seems to be more of a tempest in a teapot than anything else, right? Robert, is that true or is it really a big deal for you guys?
No, it's not a huge deal. It's just something that it's lingering out there and it could be a file that's closed. That's all.
I get it.
I think Jason heard that.
Get her to. Okay, with that in mind, does someone want to make a motion to either grant or deny the extension request?
Also move we grant.
Motion to grant the six month extension of time to meet conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, there you go.
Thank you very much.
I'm glad you're here because I think we're probably leaning in the other direction until you give us some explanation. So tell your applicant you earned your money.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Seven on our agenda is Bowers Landing and Merrimack 2 LLC. As the applicant and owner, review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved site planned at 22 additional parking spaces and associated site improvements. Parcels located at 42 Bowers Landing Drive in the I-1 Industrial and Ocean Conservation Districts, tax map 1D, lot 141A, case planning board 2023-28. And you know what this one hasn't been? Continued from anything.
Good job, Matt.
Robert, is there anything that we need to know from the-
The applicant is missing a whole ton of information. So this is just a basic waiver of full site plan. Bowers Landing Apartments is approved site. It is under construction right now. Building one on the right hand side on the plan you see in front of you is completed. I believe are partially at least occupied. The other two buildings across the street currently under construction now. Basically, the applicant's just coming in for you to add some additional parking spaces on the property because they guess they found that they don't quite have enough. The one staff concern that we had was in the submittal package, there was no revision to the landscaping plan that was approved. So it doesn't really show how the landscaping will be dealt with that's being lost to accommodate the parking spaces. I've spoken to the applicant about that and I believe he's going to comment on that. I will note the building one side, there, the original landscaping plan, which I did add to your add to your packet, so you do have that in there. Trees that were proposed there originally are not currently in that location, but we had worked as part of the CO process to relocate those trees elsewhere. They're using that area for snow storage and there's actually quite a bit of a tree buffer there naturally already. So they've repurposed those trees elsewhere. So they do exist on the site. The number of trees shown there were installed. It's just now we have the other two buildings that we're really concerned with how those are going to be repurposed.
Thank you for that comment, Robert. And I asked Robert to make sure he commented on that process that the applicant isn't out of compliance with with this landscape plan for building one, that they worked with staff to relocate some trees and everybody's happy about it. But it isn't what was shown on the plan, but it is compliant. Please introduce yourself and tell us what's going on.
Excellent. Good evening. Matt Peterson with Keach Norsham Associates here representing the proposed site plan modifications for Bowers Landing. You guys have seen me in front of you on this project here. This is the last phase, phase seven here that we've been in front of you. We've obviously the last 10 to 15 years have revised our parking calculations down. And guess what? I think the next 10 years, we might go the opposite direction a little bit here. What has basically happened is you guys have requirement of 0.5 parking spaces per one bedroom unit plus 0.5- one-bedroom unit plus 0.5 space per unit. So you're required one parking space for a one-bedroom unit. If you haven't noticed, rents are pretty high right now. We have found out that most of our one-bedroom units are two people. Obviously couples mostly, we found stuff like that. So the parking calculations that was approved and said was about 1.56 per unit. This addition of 22 spaces will get us to 1.86 and kind of fill in, get us back to where kind of the two units, two per unit was kind of what we did back in the day. So this is interesting to see. It's the first time I've had this yet. So we just had another project up north and we're starting to look at parking a little differently in some of our units and stuff like that because the tenants that can't park there get kind of upset when they're paying the amount of money they're paying. So we're proposing nine parking spaces on the right side of unit one, showing up in this location here. And then we're proposing the other 13 spaces on the left side of the two buildings. We have one space here. We have two spaces here. We had another five spaces up in here and then four spaces down in this location here. One of the things that I'd brought to this board's attention, we did this design, we had had this big open area for drainage. We had oversized that detention pond at that time and come to find out that was good because now I can add in these 22 spaces or about 4,000 square feet of pavement and my pre and post numbers are still under for everything. My two-year is .78 for the pre and it's .5 for the post. My 10-year is 4.43 for the pre and 2.31 post. My 25 is 10 pre, 10.72, and post is 5.8. So everything's almost half still again. And this is open system, open detention that we had out there. And then just as far as the landscaping, I talked with Robert, we have no problem with anything that the applicant will work with Robert to finalize the landscaping and make sure the counts are still here on site. As he said, these four that they had already relocated, I didn't know that until I talked to Robert today. And then in this location here, there's, was a transformer, which actually didn't get placed there. It got moved to the building over in this location. So this landscaping will just put around the end there. And there's three trees right here that I'm assuming we'll just push back a little on that location there. So we have no problem with working with staff to finalize the landscaping for their final COs and stuff like that. I'm going to keep it just to that there. It's been a long night listening so far and I don't need to add anything else. So if you have any questions or comments, I'll do the best I can answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Does anyone have any discussion items or questions for Matt? And if not, then our first task would be to do sort of a two-step or two things at once, which is accept the application as complete, which also implies granting the waiver of full site plan review because it isn't complete if we don't grant the waiver. Okay. Motion to accept the application complete and waive full site plan review subject to strict conformity?
Yes.
Second for that? Second for that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. Okay. I appreciate the idea of working with the staff on the trees. Otherwise, this really does seem very simple. I think it is good information for us to have in terms of how we approach our master plan and some other work that we'll ever do to know that perhaps the parking requirements are set in the other direction, not necessarily reacting to one application that comes before us.
Agreed.
If this becomes a trend, we'll sort of keep that in mind as our parking calculations are taken a look at. I'm glad that we've reached a point where we're sort of on that edge back and forth because I don't like extra pavement and don't want to really pave the earth any more than we need to, but I do like that we've got applicants that are thinking for those things. It's been a long time since we've approved a project that had sort of extra parking just in case, kind of off to the side somewhere that might get built if it's needed, but that used to be something we did pretty commonly. I can't think of any other questions to ask. This is so simple. What do you got, Maureen?
I have a question, and I think you brought up such a good point. You know, when all of these apartments are being built and they are really so expensive, are you finding that there are not just two people living there, but three or four people living there beyond adults, beyond what is expected?
I haven't been told that on the students yet, that there'd be, I don't think with one bedroom, they haven't seen that from there.
But with two bedrooms?
Oh, with the two bedroom? I haven't got the numbers. I would assume there's probably three in those, yes. I would assume there's probably a couple in one room and maybe a friend or something like that in the others, yes.
I would just thank you because I think of young kids and I don't know how they can afford these apartments, so, okay.
I don't know that who's renting these, but their statistics for actually small children in apartments like these, actually, I think this is an over 55, isn't it?
No, no. This is all regular.
Even then, small children in one-bedroom apartments, almost zero. I think when you rent these, the leases pretty much say you get so many parking spaces for your lease and you can't have four cars. You can have four people, but you can't have four cars. There ain't no place to put them. Okay. Other questions or comments? Anybody? Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? See none? Other than the waiver of full site plan review, there aren't any other requested waivers from the applicant? The staff is recommending that we grant conditional final approval with six months to fulfill the few conditions that are listed there. What's the will of the board?
What's on the question?
Nelson, you got a question?
Yeah, I did have a question. Goes into the conditions that Robert suggested. And so the question revolves around, is this a condominium ownership?
No. These are, these are owned by the owners of Bowers Landing. They rent these. These are apartments, just like the front half where the
They're rented apartments?
Yes.
Then
These are not sold, correct.
Okay, this, okay. The reason I asked was you said it had to be signed by all, all property owners.
Oh, yeah, that would be a pain if you had
If it was a condominium, it'd be Okay. I'm satisfied. Thank you.
So Lynn makes a motion to grant conditional final approval subject to the staff memo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. Thank you for waiting out till the end of the night.
I had no choice.
I don't know if entertaining was our goal, but I'll take it. Okay. Item eight on our agenda is Ashok Rampuria as the applicant and Utsi Properties MHT LLC as the owner. Review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved site plan to permit research and testing light industrial uses in addition to the already approved warehouse use on the property. The parcels located at Seven Crow's Nest Circle in the I-1 Industrial and Offshore Conservation Districts. Tax map 2D, lot 21. Case planning board 2023-29. Robert, what's up?
This is another relatively quick, simple project. Basically, it was an approved project that was done last year. Again, under construction currently. They had submitted some building plans to the building department noting, sorry, plan was approved as a warehouse use. Submitted plans to the building department, showed a manufacturing use, was not accounted for on the original plan, so the applicant's coming back now to get that addressed, basically adding some light industrial and research testing uses in addition to the warehouse use. Staff has no concerns or problems with that. I will just note for some of you who may not have been a part of the original project, the proposed uses are not necessarily a concern to us because this site, despite its location directly in front of the wastewater treatment plant, is on septic because sewer is not available to it. So they obviously can't be doing too much harsh chemical action because they'll just destroy their own system.
This is an awful lot of plan for just changing the use. Sorry about that. What's up?
Matt Ruth here from TF Moran, who is a representative of the applicant. Again, as Robert had said, we're pretty much just looking to change the use in this area. Originally, this was proposed as being two phases of development. Since then, we had gotten administrative approval to break it out into three phases as the market, you know, requires. The applicant has a proposed tenant for unit one. That is more of an engineering and research and development, which doesn't necessarily fall into a manufacturing, but we'd like to ask the board for approval to allow for light industrial and manufacturing in lieu of strictly warehouse as originally proposed. Obviously, as this thing proceeds down the line, we'd be dealing with, you know, parking requirements as the main challenge as we work through. We meet the parking requirements currently. I did provide, prepare a letter in regards to the use for unit one and regards to the approved septic design, which we believe will not be a problem. I'll be happy to hand that to you folks, give you a copy. If you have any questions, you can certainly ask me about that.
Yeah, just pass them around. Hold the comments till you get back to a microphone. The folks at home and the people taking minutes can't hear you.
Just give it to Aaron.
Yeah. So thank you for the stuff. Just a question that occurred to me out of curiosity. What are the rough sizes of each one of the units within this? I know there's, the whole building is huge. It's 800,000 square feet, but each one of the units is probably what? About 100,000?
I think, what was the total? We had just done a breakout recently. And I can't remember and nor do I have it in front of me.
Yeah, it's just a question out of curiosity. Got nothing to do with any scrutiny that we're going to give it, but please introduce yourself and then.
My name is Ashok Rampuria. I'm the developer.
Okay.
My son?
There you go. Touch the buttons to make it short.
Right green and pull it close.
My name is Ashok Rampuria. I am the owner and developer. So the first unit is 60,000. It has 18,000 square feet of majanine and the rest of the units are roughly 40,000 each.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name when I did the introduction. I did my best. So, sorry about that. Okay. Tell us about your letter.
This is just a breakdown of the proposed tenant for unit one. They currently are occupying space in Nashua. We've given a breakdown of pretty much the entire building, of which they are only one of four tenants. We did some calculations based on the percentage usage of that and applied a peaking factor that was above that that's required by the state subsurface bureau to show that the system we designed originally and got approved for unit one is adequate to meet that demand.
Okay. Thank you. The conversation earlier with the metal recycler just brought to mind the idea of hazardous materials or hazardous waste. And I think when we talk in warehousing, we were, had some discussion about what would be stored there and whether it would be hazardous. And I would imagine we were told that there wouldn't be any. If there's any associated with the potential manufacturing uses that eventually come forward as tenants, if we had some condition of approval that said that that required some review by the planning board, if there was hazardous waste, would the applicant developer have any objection to that?
I don't think that that's a concern. I think our major concern is, you know, depending on the uses that come through, that, you know, for the most part, unless it's a wholesale change, you know, we kind of are able to do it administratively. When we were here last, I remember the discussion was had and the discussion was that, you know, obviously the fire department had purview over the, you know, the storage of those materials and making sure the life safety met those. And I think that's where we had left it last time as one of the comments for this. And again, it's under the board's purview to add that condition if they wish. Obviously, staff is able to review each use as they come in for building permit and ask the questions. So I'll leave it to the board.
Understood. I will let the board have that discussion. When it comes to handling hazardous waste, I start to think of some planning board functions like, is, does the building have floor drains in it or is there some other way that the hazardous materials could find their way into the water runoff?
Yeah, we've had, we've had discussion on that. Again, because we're on septic, it would have to be a holding tank if there was anything to that degree. Obviously, that tank would have to be registered. So the applicant is aware of all that. Nothing can be discharged. You know, if there was any storage outside, obviously get into a whole, whole new gamut of permitting with the state, make sure stuff is covered and all that. And that's obviously would come at the time if that ever arose, that that was the intent.
Understood. Okay. For other discussion by members of the board, one way or the other. Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? I think we've collected, we've exhausted the room.
Grace, Grace, you got any comments?
Okay. So let's see, where's our staff memo that tells us what to do here? Yeah, there's no, there's no requirement to find it complete as it's an amendment and the staff recommends there's no waivers and so
I will move
Grant conditional final approval.
Grant conditional final approval with the proposed conditions and the application meets all applicable regulatory requirements and further to grant that conditional final approval to the application subject to recommended conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated October 31st, 2023.
Excellent. Motion in a second to grant conditional final approval with the correct findings and the information from the staff memo. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are seven, zero, zero unanimous. Thank you guys here waiting.
Thanks for hanging out.
Yeah. Okay. We are up to the planning and zoning administrators report and discussion or possible action regarding other items of concern. Robert, have you a report for us?
Not necessarily a report, but the discussion with all these extension requests we've seen over the last couple of years has kind of made me think. Just to bring up as a point for the board to consider, do we want to move to granting conditional approvals of 12 months instead of six based on the fact that state permitting really is having a hard time getting done in those six months now? And you guys are getting extension requests on every project you get and it's for that reason primarily.
So that's a great point. I am in favor of it for a reason that doesn't necessarily rate to the chances of voting on a six-month extension, but occasionally we've had where that's the only thing on the agenda and we've got to haul our butts here in the snowstorm or something like that to vote on a nothing. And although kicking it to another 12 months will still just happen in June instead of in December, but
It gets us past one.
It gets us a little further down the road. But I do, I dread the idea of ever having to come to a meeting to vote on an extension just to leave again. But, so yes, I love the idea. Does it require some change in our bylaws or change in our regs or something?
It doesn't. It's just been this kind of a standard practice to do six months, but there's, on, I will say, on the larger projects, the board's given 12 months upfront. So it just seems logical, just make that the uniform practice for everybody.
So consent of the board says do that.
Sounds good to me.
I can't think of any reason not to. Nelson?
I can't hear. I didn't hear the first part of his presentation. I'm sorry.
He's suggesting that as a matter of normal course, we give 12 months to meet conditions of approval rather than six with the effort to reduce the frequency of granting extensions just as a matter of course. And apparently we already do that with larger projects and it's just the smaller ones that are six months.
A whole year to make the conditions.
I, well Yeah. Virtually anything that you need from either the DOT or the DES just will not happen in six months.
Yeah.
Theoretically. I don't know whether that's, I don't mean to disparage those organizations.
Of course not.
Okay. Any, anything else, Robert, from you?
No, that's all I had.
Does any board members have any questions for staff? Does any board members have any other discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern? Does any board members have any other discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern? The only thing that I would mention, I, I think that there's an effort to arrange a couple of interviews for planning board candidates, and I think it involves existing candidates moving up to being in Neil's full-time position. But it may be some, there may be a new name in the mix that I don't recall. Either way, we may have a little bit of shakeup, a little bit of changes. I don't think those interviews are actually on the calendar just yet. But we will have that happen. And if there's anybody out there in the world who is interested in our planning board, whether it's a full-time or an alternate, sooner or later, there's at least a seat empty here. So come forward. With that, I think Kevin and Mark, this is the first time we have both of you guys here, so welcome. And I'm glad you guys both joined the board. You feeling like you're getting your feet under yourself a little bit and understanding what's going on? If you have questions or whatever, you know, obviously in the middle of a discussion or separately on the side, whatever, whatever helps you guys get oriented or support from the staff.
Or between, between meetings, call staff. They're great.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you both for agreeing to be a part of our board. I think it's important. Okay. Where's, there was a set of minutes, but I don't see them on my agenda here. I've got the draft of Tuesday, October 17th. Yeah, they're there. 2023. Motion to approve as distributed. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to approve the minutes. Yeah, that's that. Motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700. We're adjourned. Don't forget to turn your